Good going, our next item. So we have postponements and orders of the day. Madam City Clerk, are there any requests from staff under this section of the agenda?
No requests, Mayor.
Any requests from my fellow council members for postponements and orders of the day? If there are none, then we will go on to oral communications. Okay, I don't see any hands raised there. So oral communications is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. As with other items, you'll have three minutes to speak on any item that is not agendized this evening. And so by the time the first speaker is concluded, please have your hand raised if you would like to be called upon to speak under oral communications. Our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Louise Sadadi, followed by Tony Alexander. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I certainly have appreciated all the nice presentations we've had today so far. I attended a Zoom meeting last week that was about the housing element numbers that each city in California is required to be meeting. And as everyone is aware, these housing element numbers are very, very high for this cycle. I have gone through, I believe, four housing element cycles with Cupertino since 2001, and this is a very, very unusual year. It was presented to me and other people that these inflated housing element numbers are hitting all, I believe, 211 cities across the state. I believe that Southern California had to certify or send in their housing element numbers before we did in Northern California. And many, many of the housing element numbers that the cities in Southern California are sending in have not been certified by HCD, and they have been sent back. I have, I believe that this is becoming something that's treated like a joke in California. I think Sacramento is treating it like a joke that the cities in Southern California are not meeting their housing element numbers. I think it's discourteous to the cities of California that these housing element numbers, how they've been arrived at, there are some very, very strange statistics that are being used. The housing element numbers were arrived at and adopted by something called Plan Bay Area, which is the CASA compact. And ABAG and MTC adopted these a year ago, I believe it was a year ago, even though at the time, officials, elected officials in the state were concerned that these numbers were inflated and they were asking questions, statistical questions, about how these numbers were being arrived at. One of the cities is like 500% above what it was the last RENA cycle. And I mean, they're getting to the point where it's a glaring, they're ludicrous that someone statistically has done something wrong. And I'm really, really concerned that the cities are being forced to do bad environmental things to get these RENA numbers certified. They are, the cities are rezoning areas that are in 100-year floodplains to high density to put housing in. They're rezoning areas in fire zones to meet these high densities. They're rezoning areas in earthquake fault areas. They're rezoning areas where levees can break, such as in the Central Valley. And I think that we are in danger of having...
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Lisa is followed by Louise Sadadi, followed by Tony Alexander, followed by Mary Ellen Chell, and finally, we have Peggy Griffin. And that will be our speaker list for oral communications this evening. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I would just like to ask if it's possible tonight, or tonight would be great, if we could get an update on a few things. One would be Westport. One would be Lawrence Mitty, what's happening there? What's the next step? And of course, Falco. And quite a few people have noticed that all the heavy equipment is gone from the site at this point. Wondering how and why that happened and when it may come back. And then I'd also like to suggest that the city seriously consider a vacancy tax for... I think there's a number that staff has or someone has that reflects the number of housing units, large and small, that are just sitting vacant when the state is telling us, build, 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 housing, housing, housing. And I don't see how, if we were able to meet our RENA numbers, actually got developers to build those units? Who's going to control the vacancy of those? San Francisco, as you probably all know, is already doing this. And I think it's overdue, actually, so please have some discussion about that at some point very soon. And then also, thanks for the Model of the United Nations students, who I'm sure are long gone from the meeting, but they did a great job, and it's a great thing. Thanks for the proclamation, and thank you for them, and that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Louise Sadadi. And Louise, you'll need to unmute your microphone in order to speak. If you're...
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Louise Sadadi. I am one of the leaders of the community of dogs off-leash areas, AKA DOLAs. We would like the City Council to give a high priority to the creation of new DOLAs in Cupertino. Since our community of DOLAs workers started in 2017, we finally, as of October 2021, four years later, have one ongoing DOLA at Jolloman Park. Jolloman DOLA has been very successfully ongoing since then without incident. One DOLA cannot serve all the dogs and dog owners in Cupertino. Especially since COVID, Cupertino has over 11,000 dogs and growing. For further work on more DOLAs to continue successfully, the creation of more DOLAs needs to be given a high priority by the council in the city's work plan for 2022, 2023. More DOLAs need to be formed throughout Cupertino to enable nearby residents to walk their dogs to and from a close DOLA rather than driving to a distant single DOLA. This complies with Cupertino's policy of encouraging residents to walk, as well as improves residents' mental health by giving them an outdoor opportunity for community engagement, which includes seniors, young people, as well as those in between in age. More DOLAs also helps build community and relationships. More DOLAs help regulate, socialize, and train dogs off-leash and their owners at official DOLAs. A DOLA for little dogs and delicate dogs is also being organized by us in the community to hopefully be coordinated with the city approval for Linda Vista Park. Presently, Jolly Mandola serves large dogs. Small dogs do not go there because small dogs are intimidated and at risk with large dogs, who appropriately for their breed, run, chase, and wrestle each other, but who can easily and accidentally run over and injure small or delicate dogs. Little and delicate dogs need an area separate from that athletic arena. Delicate dogs can include large gentle dogs who are afraid of large athletic dogs, older dogs who need a more sedate dog setting, arthritic dogs, fearful dogs, frail dogs, whatever. A little dog and delicate dog DOLA would serve the needs of the community of little dogs and delicate dogs and their owners, who are very eager to have a legal DOLA available to them. More DOLAs being given a high priority would provide essential support to the community in their efforts to form more DOLAs. Without a high priority, no DOLA trials could be started again since 2019. A high priority given to more DOLAs was so Cupertino City Council is attuned to the needs of its community and would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Our next speaker is Tony Alexander.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm also speaking on the same subject. I was one of the original people with the Jolly Mandola. And there's been some good things, I feel, have actually come out of the pandemic, one of them being heavier use of the parks. I'm seeing a lot of organized events, such as regular volleyball at Jolloman. Baseball's just started up again. People are getting out there, and one of the benefits of the DOLAs has been people getting to know their neighbors, a very diverse group of people, people watching out for each other who didn't even know each other existed before. It's not just about the dogs, it's about the people connecting. And in some cases, we have some elderly people who come out. One doesn't even have a dog, but they come out, they connect, they used to have a dog, but more than that, they want that community spirit and contact out there. So I think the Parks and Recreation Committee did a great job working with us to get this going. Joanne, the Parks and Recs Director, worked with this as well. And I know as a council, you're very busy, but with the template we have, what we've proven, I would ask, as it shouldn't take too much time, can we expand the DOLA concept? My goal is not, forgive the pun, to have the city go to the dogs, but go to the volleyball, go to the soccer, go to all of the activities, and widen the dogs off-leash to the points of not having people having to drive, connecting people, and continuing to build the community, literally, one or two relations at a time. I'm still constantly meeting people, and I think it's extremely valuable, and it would take a minimal amount of time to expand. And most of us involved would be willing to help other parts of the city get these things going. It's not a case of, we've got ours, good luck to the rest of you, we want to be supportive and keep this movement going. So with that, thank you very much for your attention, and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Tony. Our next speaker is Mary Ellen Chell. Welcome, Mary Ellen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Chell, and they call me the Sheriff of the Jolloman Park DOLA because I let people know that what the rules are. And because a lot of times, there are new people coming in, and they have no idea. You know, they don't bother to read the information on the sandwich boards. So I let them know, and if people are not compliant, I tell them that they need to comply so that we don't have any issues. And so, of course, I can't throw them in jail, but that might come. Anyway, I would like to ask for more DOLAs as well. I live near Hoover Park, and it would be great for me to be able to walk my dog there. I'm not getting any younger, and so it would be nice to have one in my neighborhood. Also, the great thing, there are so many great things about the Jolly Mandola. For example, my dog gets to actually be a dog. And he is a teenage boy at this point, and he has his girlfriends there, so he gets to chew on their faces. I love you, I love you, let me chew on your face. And he just has a great time there. And I do, too. I am a widow, and so I get to connect with people there. I have made some wonderful friends there. It's great to get out and to connect with nature. Tonight, as I was leaving, I saw that full moon. It was just gorgeous. I can't imagine what it looks like now. So I would like to ask that we, that you as council put this on your list, prioritize creating more DOLA trials. And again, as Tony said, I am happy to help in any way that I can because this has been so great for me. You know, my dog gets to get out and be a dog and socialize. I get to get out and socialize. I'm in nature. It's good for my mental health to be out there. And I just think that we have the space to do that. So if needed, you have my name, and I know you know how to connect with me if you need to. And I want to thank all of our city council and our staff and our deputies for making Cupertino such a great place to live. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. And our last speaker under oral communications is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. I second Lisa Warren's comments on asking for updates on three projects. I'd like to add the Mary Affinu ELI and the Santa Clara County Affordable Housing at the Outback Site. And I also second her comment about looking into a vacancy tax or something similar, something to encourage empty houses to be rented. And finally, pavement. Cupertino is known for its nice roads. I don't know what the score was, but it was really, really high, and you can tell when you drive from San Jose into Cupertino. But we've got pavement hackers tearing up our roads, and I think it has to do with the cell towers. If you look at the curbside lanes between Homestead and Interstate 280 on both sides, these pavement hackers have cut squares into the pavement, and then they haven't patched it properly. So they're tearing apart. And I'm seeing them work at Blaney and Homestead, too, and it doesn't look like a really good patch. So I would request that maybe the city have an inspector inspect all these patches and call them back, or don't issue them another permit to cut another hole until they fix it. It's our tax dollars and Cupertino's pride in their roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And that concludes our oral communications for this evening. We'll bring it back over to council. This is now under the section of our agenda called Reports by Council and Staff. We are now on item number three. The subject is a set of brief reports on our council member activities, along with brief announcements. And I'll remind the council, try to encapsulate this for your individual comments to a minute. The general purpose of this is to give some brief updates to the public or to possibly follow up on, you know, some items in terms of referral to staff that you may have heard in oral communications, but without getting into the substance, of course. First, we have council member Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Real quick, the vacancy rate for Santa Clara County, 46,000 units. Okay, so Friday, February 11th, I participated in the CalCity statewide environmental quality policy committee meeting, where we went over ACA VII and formed a statement on it to the board to ensure environmental protection. We went over policies and made suggestions for review, and I suggested the Plastics Ballot Initiative called the California Plastic Waste Reduction Regulations Initiative for Review, which has significant funding from Recology to the tune of almost $4 million. On Sunday, February 13th, I attended the opening of Natural Music in the former Sweet Music Studios with the mayor and council member Way, and that has been vacant for about 10 years, and I'm really excited to see it reopened. That is where my sons first took lessons, so I'm glad to see the music teachers back. And it's a great space, and it's a very exciting studio with jazz and rock lessons, rock music lessons, and band opportunities for when the students become proficient, similar to School of Rock. So I'm really happy to see natural music here. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Moore. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So on the 5th of February, I attended the annual library forum, where the library district present their annual performance. And especially, we had two Cupertino teams presenting their poems. And the youngest one was eight or nine years old, that they were amazing poets. And then on the 7th, the city staff took us on a city tour of properties to look at Stocker Mile House, Blatch House, and the house on Bri, Bryan, which the city has purchased, and the one on Torrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have council member Way.
All right, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'm going to skip the Be Natural Music that council member Moore already mentioned, and the library district forum, but I just want to mention that our very own library extension was mentioned on the forum, so we were very proud of it. February 7th, I attended the ABCs of ADU seminar because ADU is part of, could be part of our housing element. So I think maybe our city could do a similar seminar to educate our residents. On September 9th, I attended the Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action webinar, along with the California Environmental Protection Agency. You know, our youth are on the front run in protecting our environment, so I think Cupertino really is part of it and encouraging our youth to be part of the environmental protection actions. And the 10th, I attended the Lunar New Year Celebration hosted by the ABA Council, ABC Council of Cupertino Chamber, where they honored two bridge awards. One is our business leader, one of the pineapple tie. Pineapple tie opened during the COVID, and then they really are part of the community. They've been out there and giving back to the community, so they received the bridge award, which is very deserving, and the individual award goes to Bali Bovee, 15-year superintendent of the Fremont Union High School District, who's retiring after this year, so a very deserving person, too. And just one last mention is, as an executive board member with CalCity's Peninsula Division, we had a meeting yesterday, and we're planning education seminars and put together so that the three counties, San Francisco County, San Mateo County, and Santa Clara County cities, can get together and work together on infrastructure seminars coming up in March, and I'll let everybody know. Thank you.
Great, thank you, council member Way. Next, we have council member Willie.
Yeah, thank you. So I really want to focus tonight on, I attended the Cupertino Plan to End Homelessness workshop, and I feel it's just so important that, you know, this community is going to be actively involved in trying to assist our homeless directly. They did bring, well, there were 108 attendees, very high number. One of the comments from the consultant that ran it said Cupertino creating a planned end homelessness is really a first of a kind that they know of, where a city is actually creating their own plan. To me, that's great. And then they talked about our homeless jobs program that's already up and running. My hope is that this plan to end homelessness will come back to the city council with options on ways we'll be able to help the homeless people that are in our community, for which they said that currently, there's 159. There's some that we really see on the corners, but when they tell us there's 159, it, to me, says we need to help and work on this issue. So hopefully, staff will be bringing back some options for us as they explore the options, maybe places for overnight parking is needed, emergency shelter, very temporary type things like that. So it's part of the plan, and it's now had its... So thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised? Did you want to follow up on something?
Oh, okay, yeah. Actually, I attended the Chamber Lunar New Year event also. It was great. And I guess for the CalCities, I am on the CalCities Policy Committee, which is not exactly a council appointment, so I guess I should report here. And so this is the second meeting of the year, and we reviewed the guidance of CalCities, which still focused on local control, but then there seems to be a desire to define what local control is, and then we approved a work program for this year. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and Vice Mayor, just for future reference, for that kind of thing, encapsulate your comments within a minute. You know, I'm not going to give a report out in the interest in respecting everyone's time. And so if you can't get to it, then you don't get to it, just, you know, just for future reference. And then with regard to a very brief update, as requested by a couple of members of the public, I can, you know, let people know that the Westport project is going forward. There was one component of it that was a little bit nebulous, if you're reading the media reports, and that had to do with the townhomes and row homes. That was actually purchased by Taylor Morrison through a financing mechanism. So they're building, as well as the BMR units for senior affordable. The senior market rate in memory care units are going forward with related company within the next year, but it does look like that there's significant movement going forward with the entirety of that project. And then as for the other requests, I'm going to leave that to the city managers' updates. With regard to our next item on the agenda, that's item number four, that has to do with our committee assignments. And so I ask that, and I'll just take one bite of the apple, I won't go backwards anymore. So if you have an update for your committee assignments, provide those updates. We'll start with Vice Mayor Chow, and then go to council member Moore.
So on the 9th, I attended the mayor and commission meeting. So mayor and I are taking it every other month, I'm doing the even months. Yeah.
Great, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have council member Moore.
Thank you. On February, well, on February 3rd, I gave the VTA PAC update to the VTA Board. On the 10th, I attended the VTA Express Lane Opening Ceremony in Mountain View for the US 101 Express Lanes, which is phase three of that project, which included over $50 million of funding from Google and Facebook, and that project will eventually be extended to Morgan Hill. Also, on February 10th, I chaired the VTA PAC meeting, where we had an extensive discussion on freeway litter and graffiti, with nearly every member across the county having something to say about how this problem's gotten worse and learn about how we can network our resources to have the freeways cleaned. It has been a challenge to keep maintenance workers in the area, and understaffing issues continue. On a positive note, we may be seeing a cleanup day for the I-280 in Cupertino in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Moore. Next, we have council member Willie.
Yeah, so on the 9th was the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting, and we installed the new officers, which is our councilman Way is going to be on the Committee for Finance and Administration. So thank you for stepping forward for that. And one item that they do have is that they actually have a scholarship program. So those with high school students could go to their website and find out more details about a possible scholarship. And then they have several of their power purchase agreement projects going to be coming online over the next year or so, the first one being in March. Well, the first one was January, then another one in March. Is all contributing to getting us off the fossil fuels and onto renewable energy. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Willie. And councilmember Way, did you want to report out on anything? No, okay, great. So I'll just dovetail off of councilmember Moore on the VTA item. I'm on the VTA Board of Directors, and we did have a board meeting then. We actually had in our board meeting a member of Caltrans for our district, I believe it's District 5, and that's essentially, you know, the district that encompasses the Bay Area. And, you know, people may have noticed, certainly all the elected officials there, you know, noticed a lot of the various, you know, kind of litter situations along the various freeways, you know, controlled by Caltrans. And we've run into issues, you know, we've had appetite from our community itself where people would say, hey, you know, we'll go out there. We'll go out there and pick up the litter ourselves, right? And... And, you know, the, the issue is that we don't actually have an encroachment permit to go on there. There's also, you know, the issue of training to pick up litter. You don't know what might be there. And then also, you know, the safety issue as well. So when we had a member of Caltrans on our VTA agenda come in, and basically, you know, the local director, we actually had a very vigorous discussion about picking up the, the litter along the highways, which Councilmember Moore referenced. It was actually a discussion that I had had with City Manager Troop with regard to, you know, earlier trying to apply for grant funding, dealing with Caltrans. Unfortunately, you know, by the time I, it caught my attention, we only had a couple of days left, and so we weren't able to get that grant funding. But shortly thereafter, this is when we had that VTA board meeting, and there was this member of Caltrans talking about things like having a volunteer litter pickup day, among other things such as, you know, major items like funding for this type of cleanup by, by Caltrans, which I assure you was very vigorously discussed by the elected officials there, representing virtually every geographic area of Santa Clara County. So what I'm hoping in the near future to bring back to the community is the opportunity to consolidate a volunteer group to start, you know, taking our ad hoc, you know, efforts to help clean up the, the sides of the highways in conjunction with Caltrans and their, you know, kind of litter cleanup day efforts. You know, I, I think, you know, when I asked those particular questions focused on that and focusing upon litter cleanup day, I, I think it really sent a strong message at the VTA Board that, you know, it's, it's such a strongly felt issue that people are willing to go and volunteer to pick this stuff up. And then that really is what I think lynchpinned and triggered the conversation of, you know, you know, the rest of the elected officials, who are very vociferous. I, I didn't realize how deeply felt that this is throughout the entire geography of Santa Clara County. So hopefully, that goes forward well. We also had the Cities Association, our Santa Clara County Cities Association meeting. We met on the legislative side. Interestingly enough, legislative discussion, part of it had to do with the VTA Board. Assemblymember Berman is extending his bill from last year into a two-year bill and trying to think about ways to potentially reform the board for VTA and the governance structure. With regard to the rest of the Cities Association, I sit in on the regular meeting this year, and, you know, with, with the time in mind, I'll go ahead and refer that out to, you know, the rest of, you know, I'll, I'll provide some written comments on that. So I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. That's item number five. That is going to be our city manager's report. That is a city manager update. Jim, please provide the update for item five.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It'll be, I'll do it quickly. We do have a spring recreation schedule update. The spring recreation schedule is back in print. So the registration for residents began on Tuesday, February eighth, and for non-residents, it began on Tuesday, February fifteenth. Well, it's today. Copies of the schedule can be found online at Cupertino.org/recreation or at any of the open city facilities and soon in your mailbox. Real quick for COVID updates. February ninth, twenty twenty-two, the county Santa Clara Public Health announced it will not lift local indoor masking requirements when the state does lift its masking requirement on February sixteenth, which is tomorrow. Instead, the county is going to continue to base decisions on whether to lift the indoor masking requirements on the risks posed by COVID-19, using defined metrics related to vaccination, hospitalizations, and COVID-19 cases. However, the county does anticipate that it will be able to lift these indoor masking requirements in a matter of weeks as the case rate does continue to decline. I just checked it a little bit ago, and it's actually dropped down some more. So right now, the requirements to lift the mandate are hospitalizations in the county are low and stable, which they've been, and the judge, it's in the judgment of health officer. And that the seven-day average of new cases is at five fifty or below. So just a second ago, I checked it, and it was at one thousand forty-five, and that was down a hundred from yesterday. So it is dropping. Some of the other ones we've talked about before, countywide, there were two hundred and nine, almost three hundred thousand cases. And when I wrote this just yesterday, there's one thousand one forty-five cases on the seven-day average. Case rates continue to decline. There were about six thousand cases two weeks ago, so it's dropped down quite a bit from then. Let's see, what are some other good numbers? Eighty-four percent of the county's population has been fully vaccinated, which is extremely high, and sixty-nine, sixty-seven percent of the eligible residents have also received a booster. So then there's just some other ones we've talked about before. But with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
And Jim, did you want to speak to any of the requests from public on items or?
My, yeah, my apologies. So for the Lawrence Midi, that park, we do have, so San Jose did, go ahead and they deannexed that piece. For those that didn't know, that parcel we owned it, it was actually in the city of San Jose. So that has gone through, the city has done their first step, so that's good. So that's been deannexed from San Jose. The next piece is, we worked hard. Chad, our city engineer, got that through, and he was able to get everything up and done. We turned that into Lafco. That'll be the next step. So we should be able to get on. In fact, I see Chad up here. Do you want to talk about that, Chad, real quick?
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak about it briefly. San Jose City Council did approve a resolution supporting the deannexation from the city of San Jose, and the application forms have been submitted to Lafco, and we are shooting to have Lafco, the Lafco Board, consider the annexation of the property at their April sixth board meeting. At this point in time, we're waiting for them to get to their materials to make sure that they have everything, and I'm continuing to provide information as they need it.
That's, that's a big step for us. For Valco, I'm gonna throw, throw it to over here, our city attorney, Chris. Do you have anything you can add to that one?
So only that, you know, there, there has been utility make-ready work going on at the site under a building permit that was issued in twenty twenty. There's recently been a pause to that work to allow us to continue to work with our partners at the County Department of Environmental Health, as, as well as the developer, to make sure that work is done consistently with all applicable requirements. And so we are, our work to sort that out. We anticipate it will be a cooperative process from all parties involved to allow that work to be.
I think, I think that was it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let's go on to items number six through seventeen. That is our consent calendar. I'll go first to our council to refer any items that we are requesting to take off of consent. Councilmember Moore.
Just one. Thank you, Mayor Paul. I would like to take item number thirteen off of consent.
Okay, item number thirteen is the consideration of accounts payable for the period ending January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And I don't see any other hands raised. I'll go to our members of the public if anyone would like to request items to be taken off consent at this time. I don't see any hands raised, and so let me go back over to our council. Can we have a motion for items six through twelve, as well as fourteen through seventeen, as recommended in our agenda for passage? Councilmember Willie?
So moved.
Councilmember Way?
Second.
Okay, I don't see any further hands raised, so let's go ahead and take a roll call vote for the motion on the table regarding consent items six through twelve and fourteen through seventeen. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so Councilmember Moore, because you pulled item number thirteen, and that's an account payable week, would you like to open this up with regard to the reason that you're pulling the item?
Sure, Mayor Paul. There's three items in there. I just wanted to point out. And I know that we all went on tours of the, the facilities and saw that the Blatch House was being used as storage. There is a storage facility bill of six hundred and forty-six dollars, and it looks like it's a monthly charge. That, that's new to me. I don't recall seeing it previously. I might have missed it. I just wanted to point that one out. And as a matter of interest, Blackberry Farm Pine Beetle Suppression of eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. I'm only bringing that up as a matter of interest, that they, it looks like they have a pine beetle problem, and that can be really devastating. So I hope that's successful. Lastly, West Valley Community Services, there was an article talking about Cupertino residents in the Mercury News recently having an increase of people using their services. And in that article, they mentioned that their West Valley Community Services revenue, eight point seven million, expenses five point eight million. And in our, in this account's payable statement, payment register, I should say, West, West Valley Community Services received fourteen thousand three hundred and six dollars for the, the homeless jobs program, homeless jobs program. And to my knowledge, that was for, it was to assist two individuals. So I would like to hear a report from West Valley Community Services about how this program's going, where the money's going. Because that, if that's only two individuals, we're talking eighty-four thousand dollars per year for this. And so I'd like to see if it's, if it is being cost-effective. And, and then, at the end of the day, I'd actually like to know how much money we are giving West Valley Community Services, given their eight point seven million dollars of revenue that they're mentioning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And so is your request here to, to hold this account payable register until your follow-ups can be addressed, or are you simply pointing those out as, as, as points to note in this item?
I think, Mayor Paul, I would like, with regards to the storage, to know what city policy is using facilities like Blatch House for storage versus also having an outside storage facility. I'm kind of curious about that. And with West Valley, I would like a report, actually. So I would like it held to find out what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, I am amenable to that. Would anyone else like to speak on this item from council? Councilmember Way?
I, I do believe West Valley Community Services service, including a lot of services, so that eight million dollars could be a lot of report. And to hold on to this because of that, I, I, I just, I think we should, we could get a report on it, but this is part of it to, I, I, I think we should just let it, I mean, let it go through, but understand what's the in and out, because eight million dollars, that includes a lot of things, not just the jobs service.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Before I bring back to Councilmember Moore, let me just, just make a note. I, I think Councilmember Moore's request was to provide an update on the expenditure that's listed in this particular account payable with regard to the, the homeless jobs program, not the entirety of the eight million dollar budget.
Okay, then I misunderstood it. Okay.
Okay, so let's go to the member of the public with a hand raised here. Lisa Warren, assuming that you are speaking on item number thirteen, I'll, I'll go ahead and repeat the instruction to the members of the public. If you want to speak on this item, please raise your hand by the time the first speaker is concluded speaking. If your hand is raised by that time, I'll call on you. If not, then we will not have you on the speaker list for this item. Welcome, Lisa. You'll have three minutes.
It was an error. I just moved my laptop from one room to another, and I must have pushed a button. My hand is not raised. Sorry.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so I'll go ahead and bring this back to our city council. And so let me ask staff, do you feel that you have sufficient direction to follow up on Councilmember Moore's request prior to bringing the accounts payable ending January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, back to city council?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll jump in there. Yes, I believe we do have sufficient information.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, City Manager Troop. So let us go on to item, I believe it was number eighteen. But let me pull up my agenda. We are, yes, on item number eighteen, we don't have any second readings of ordinances or public hearings. This follows, this, item number eighteen falls under the heading Ordnances and Action Items. We have three this evening. Item number eighteen. You may have heard in the news, this subject is the options for acquisition of the Lehigh Cement Plant and Quarry by Santa Clara County. We have a staff report by our city attorney, Chris Jensen. And Chris, would you care to provide that report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I will have a brief presentation. I will attempt to show my screen. And hoping everybody can see the slideshow.
We can see it, yes.
Great, okay. So as, as the title indicates, the, this item relates to a referral from the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors to explore options for county acquisition of the Lehigh Cement Plant and Quarry. As the title indicates, this is a preliminary referral to county staff. And I'll provide a little bit of background regarding referral here. So as, as everybody here probably knows, the Lehigh Plant and Quarry are located out west of Cupertino on approximately thirty-five hundred acres of property. The plant has operated in something like its current form since nineteen thirty-nine. The history of mining at the site actually dates back further than that. The plant operates under a reclamation plan adopted pursuant to the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, and it currently contemplates the full restoration of the site by two thousand thirty-two. In two thousand eighteen, Lehigh initiated a process to amend the reclamation plan, to expand mining operations, and to extend the reclamation timeline. That process had been ongoing when Lehigh actually initiated litigation against the county last year to attempt to compel the county to process that application. And Lehigh also sought judgment from the court with respect to its vested rights to continue and expand mining at the location. That legal action was unsuccessful, and as a consequence, Lehigh is in the process of, has initiated the process of environmental review of that reclamation plan application with the county. There are, have, have, have been a significant history of environmental impacts and impacts on the community from the Lehigh Plant. There's dust, traffic, and noise on Cupertino city streets associated with hauling from the plant, other plant operations. There have been a, a range of environmental impacts. Most recently, there have been examples include discharges of sediment to Permanent Creek, which I believe resulted in a notice of violation, also exceedances of waterboard waste discharge requirements for selenium. In a separate county referral that we're not actually discussing today, the County Board of Supervisors has asked county staff to provide more information on the history of environmental compliance or environmental non-compliance, as the case may be, at the plant. And so that will provide a, a, an additional source of information on, on some of these violations and other exceedances at the plant. Also note that, I think as, as many people here are aware, that the plant was cited by the city, among others, for illegally grading a haul road in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe. That, so, so there are a range of impacts from plant operations. This is all as, as way of background to the current referral to, from, to the Board of Supervisors. Just last week, Supervisor Savidian announced that he would be making a referral or requesting a referral to county staff to report back to the Board of Supervisors within ninety days with options for consideration related to the potential acquisition of the Lehigh Plant. And this, I think, is rightly characterized as a, a first step in what is likely to be a long process that will have financial considerations, environmental considerations, and important considerations related to land use that will involve the county. It will certainly impact the city of Cupertino and, and other surrounding cities. And that, the, the Board of Supervisors met today, this, this measure was considered, and the board did approve the referral unanimously, so staff at the county has been assigned with. So staff at the county have been assigned with the task of, of, of beginning to investigate the options. The, 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 the question before council today is whether, whether or not to take a position on these efforts by the county to begin investigating options for acquiring the parcel. The, the recommended action, as you see in your agenda packet, is, is to provide direction to the city manager and city attorney for a letter in support of the county's efforts to study acquisition of the Lehigh property. And this recommendation is based both on past council expressions of concern as reflected to the prior priority given for monitoring pollution from the Lehigh Plant in the current work program, a- as well as longstanding expressions of community concern regarding the plant. That said, this is, this exploratory referral from the county is very preliminary. There are necessarily many unanswered questions at this stage of the process. And so, a- as noted here, an alternative action, and, and I think another reasonable alternative available to council would be to, to monitor the county efforts to study acquisition of Lehigh property. And then, you know, of course, retain the option for taking a position regarding the county's efforts at a later date. And with that, I will turn this back over to council for any questions you have for me or other staff, or of course, your comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. I'm gonna go ahead and refer this to members of the public before we bring this back to city council. But, you know, having worked in conjunction with you to bring this to our city, I'll just go ahead and make a note that in our agenda, I did make a slight modification to the recommended action as initially drafted it. And thank you for your help over the course of this last week and a half or so, and bringing this to the forefront. I, I added the words "and otherwise" regarding, regarding the letter in support of these efforts by Santa Clara County. So I, I just wanted to open up the possibility of council comments going in to a letter that would also be encouraging of the county's referral. And the County Board of Supervisors, as you noted earlier today, have unanimously voted for that referral. So let me go ahead and open this up to members of the community. I have Jennifer Griffin with a hand raised, as well as Lisa Warren. The same goes for this, as, as in the past, we have three minutes each for members of the public to speak. And if you have your hands raised by the time that the first person concludes speaking, I will call on you to provide public comment for this item number eighteen. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor Darkey. I don't know if people are aware, but the property lies within Cupertino's LAFCO jurisdiction. We have the right to annex it. We have had the right since at least two thousand. I was in the county before, and I was aware at the time that.
Jennifer, you're trailing away. I'm not sure.
Anyway, Cupertino has the right to annex the, the property. Can you hear me say that?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. We have discussed this before. This might be a good plan of the county purchasing the property. But I do think that it should go immediately to mid peninsula, the regional open space. The land should, it, it's, it has not been broken up since the Rancho days, since eighteen, probably sixty-five. It was originally part of the land that was with Rancho San Antonio property. There is one hundred-year floodplain problems there. You cannot put housing in most of those areas. It is a fire zone. Last summer, those areas around there were under quarantine because of potential fire danger. I know that. I know people that live in that area that were ready to evacuate. So if we're gonna be putting housing in there, we need to rethink. I do not want this thirty-one hundred acres to become a panacea for every person in this state or city that is trying to put in high-density housing. You cannot put it in there. That is a fire zone. There's a hundred-year floodplain, and the land needs to be cleaned up. So this is no panacea to solve all the housing problems for the county. It should go immediately to mid peninsula, regional open space. Make sure that parts of it is not in San Mateo County because it borders the Stanford property. Make sure where your headwaters of the two creeks are, San Francisco Creek and the Permanente Creek. But that land should be taken immediately and put into Mid Penn. Don't let anybody else get it because it has to be either cleaned up, and there is a one hundred-year floodplain. I know that. I have known that my entire life. So this is nobody's panacea. This is a bunch of land that needs to become parkland. Or, and I would feel more comfortable, we've already had states on our back. Let's annex it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Lisa's followed by Peggy Griffin, and we don't have any further hands raised at this point. So Peggy will be our last speaker on this item eighteen. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So just to add a little bit to what happened today with the supervisors, it was unanimous, though, it took all of twenty minutes for the entire subject because they all know it's the right thing to do. And that twenty minutes actually included three speakers, one being Brian Schmidt from Green foothills, who was all for it, and referred to Mid Penn. And then Brian Malone from Mid Penn itself said, yes, yes, yes. Shawnee from Audubon Society also said she had, of course, was in support, and to return this quarry back to nature. And she said that there were a hundred and thirty letters from people in support of this action to do further research on it. And I believe it's a ninety-day timeframe to do that. So I encourage you also to go along with this, if that's the way you want to put it, to support this. And let all the supervisors know that that's the case. There was a lot of, not a lot in twenty minutes, but there was some discussion, and there's been some things in writing about, we have examples of how this can work. And, and I want to add, given the proclamation that was happened tonight, I don't think you can say no, because this is an opportunity to respect the right of citizens to have healthy environment, because it's not healthy now. So there you have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next and final speaker on this item is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. I support the previous speakers. I encourage you to support and go with the flow. But I also encourage you to look into what Jennifer Griffin mentioned about land use and the flood. When you start talking about lots of land, people get greedy, and they have these ideas on how they're gonna use it. And I think Cupertino, since it lies within Cupertino's boundaries, should have a very strong say in what happens to this land. Anyway, I support the initial idea of acquire, the, the county acquiring the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And we'll bring it back up to council. I see a hand raised from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, before, before we have you speak, well, let, let me go ahead and address a couple of points raised by members of the public. So Jennifer Griffin pointed out that there is the potential of annexation. Annexation is possible, but it would have to be voluntary. E- even though the land does fall within the borders of, or at least partly within the borders of Cupertino and our sphere of influence, it would still require the consent of the, of the property owner. So with regard to future, you know, usage of the land, certainly, you know, Mid Peninsula Regional, Regional Open Space District is a prospective partner. And, you know, a lot of this comes down to things like, you know, what are the, the, the costs? And, you know, the valuations and, and so forth. But I think that we'll have a, a good discussion over the course of time, starting with this evening here, in terms of, you know, what are the various factors we're gonna be considering? Mining has been going on in this location for, you know, about a hundred years at this point. And so it's not gonna be, you know, kind of undone in a year, five years, or, or even in a decade. But I think that this is a good first step. So with regard to, you know, some of the activities that we've undertaken in the last several weeks, well, you know, to bring this forward to the public, we, we did work pretty, pretty well with our county supervisor, Justice Savidian, as well as a number of the other local jurisdictions, namely the mayors. And, and we put together a press release recently to indicate our support from the cities of not just Cupertino and Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. We also had Sunnyvale's mayor and Palo Alto's mayor join us on, at the last day as we were putting this together. So, you know, th- this wasn't a really long and drawn-out effort, but it was one that quickly, you know, maintained a fair amount of momentum. So I, I, you know, expressed the sentiment internally that in my seven years on council, I actually haven't heard really strong opposition to the notion of the mining ceasing, you know, within our, within our residential base, you know. And, and that goes for, you know, any geographic region within Cupertino. So, you know, I, I, I think that there's a lot to be said for, you know, you know, treating people fairly. But at the same time, you know, we also have a, a lot of other considerations, like the, you know, current status of our, our denser population in the area and the fact that, you know, health is at stake. There, there are a lot of considerations here that we'll need to delve into as, as this goes along. But let me go ahead and start with other council members and their comments. For, for my own part, I mean, I pretty much, you know, publicized my, my, my support for this referral. So I, I, I'll be open and transparent about that from the outset. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Just for disclosure, I did contact the Santa Clara County Planning Department and spoke to senior planner, Robert Salisbury, today to get some clarification on some issues that I was curious about. I want to thank staff, particularly the city attorney. If you look in the, the written communications for tonight, the, the opening four pages has answers to some of the questions that I had regarding the site. So there are some maps in there if people are interested in it. I think as we move forward, we should probably have maps so that people know the, the borders a little more clearly. You, you can see it where Cupertino, where Cupertino falls into the quarry property. One thing about that site, they, they began with the cement mining, cement manufacturer, I should say, limestone mining for the Shasta Dam. And then they did do some bomb-making, aluminum foil manufacturer ended in the eighti- late eighties. When I first got here, they were, they were actually burning some tires for fuel, and now it's petroleum coke. They've been the county's largest greenhouse gas producer. The, the largest. I mean, that's quite serious. And to my knowledge, they haven't been actually producing cement on-site. But what it looks like is that they, the way the, the rules, if you will, are, are written up, they can stall beginning reclamation for about fifteen years after they have ceased operation. So it could be really a long, long wait for them to start their reclamation. So there, there are a few items that I would like included and sent on to the Board of Supervisors regarding this project. I don't know if this is the time. If you want some input later on, I can, I can add that. I, I am concerned about the, because there are talks of having housing, I'm concerned about a comparison of the contamination that's already there at the site versus residential screening levels in the future. Is it even feasible? I've heard some questions about that, the feasibility for having housing there. And I think that the public needs to understand how long they can stall off doing the reclamation, because I think that's super problematic for us. And overall, the statement that I would want us to be making to the county is that simply, you know, they must do their due diligence with regards to having a complete assessment of the contamination, the potential future uses, and their required screening levels. But they are in step with the community's will to have what looks like a spent operation, begin the last chapter, and have that scar that we've been looking at on the hill, on the hillside finally healed and reclaimed back to a usable state. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And next we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, great that Councilman Moore, he essentially covered the things of interest. I would ask that, I think maybe the city attorney could put that first page that Councilman Moore was referring to, the aerial map of that. I think it's always good that the community kind of understands the, the magnitude of what we're talking about, whether it's a park or it's Lehigh. Is the city attorney able to put that page up? And then I can.
The city attorney will attempt to put that page up.
Great. So what I would say then, I'm, oh, great. So let me start with my note. The history of the Lehigh for the, for the years that I've been in Cupertino, you know, we keep going to the meetings, some of them, you know, get held here in Cupertino, and we see the long list of violations. And it, it's not something that's legacy. It's, you know, current violations or just ongoing pollution violations. And of course, it's concerning to all of us. And so with this type of a history, I mean, of course, you know, we should be trying to move in the direction of stopping that type of pollution and affecting so many people. So now, when we get to this, and the first resident that was talking about annexing, can we kind of get an idea of how it lays into the Cupertino borders versus Los Altos and Los Altos Hills? You know, on the one hand, we're just the very west, west side of Cupertino touching it. But, and the haul road, no, please keep the map up there because that's what we're referring to. Is the city attorney or Public Works able to kind of tell us of that three thousand acres, you know, where do those three municipalities play? And Santa Clara County, so four. The first map, I think, is the easiest to understand because it's got the, I, what I would consider to be the three thousand-plus acres, where this is pretty much just focused on the, the mining operation.
Yeah, I, I, so I'll, I, I can answer part of that question. I, I'm not sure that I can answer the entire question. The reason I, I put this up is, this is taken from the county LAFCO site, and that red line, which I, it's, I understand it's hard to see here, shows this Cupertino Urban Service Area boundary. So that's, that's not necessarily the Cupertino city limits, which are more constrained, but, but these are the areas that have already been, you know, designated by LAFCO as within Cupertino's urban service area.
Good. So if you could go back to that previous slide, so we, again, we can just kind of see the, the magnitude of, you know, that it, it really is Santa Clara and Los Altos Hills and Los Altos, and really belongs, I think, with Mid Penn as opposed to an annexation type that Cupertino would then somehow be over or part of reclamation for such a huge operation. So obviously, we don't have that kind of information tonight, but I think we really need to have our eyes open and make sure that the organization with enough, enough authority and ability to make sure that that whole site is addressed. authority and ability to make sure that that whole site is addressed, you know, 15 years worth. So I'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you for the presentation, uh city attorney.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, you know, this, this Lehigh and Stevens Quarry has been in Cupertino's eye for a long, long time. I know a lot of residents really pay attention and provide details, especially, I want to mention Rota Frye, who really, you know, on top of this. So I really like to thank our representative, Ed County Supervisor, Joe Smithin, for bringing this up. As Mayor says, Mayor Paul says, this is just a beginning of a very, very long process. So our position right now really is to support um Joe Smithin and our, and other supervisors to support, to start this process. So in, um, yes, we do want to, eventually, if this really happens, you know, the land use, everything, uh the reclamation has to be paid in details, but at this moment, this is a long, long way to go. So what we want to do is really support this proposition and support our supervisors to go ahead and forge ahead to do it, and really, in the end, all these details will come up in the middle of it, but at this moment, I think our positions really should be just really supporting it with positive, you know, reinforcement from our residents, from the city council, from the staff. So I, I, I really want to thank personally our county Board of Supervisors, Joe Smithin, for really moving this, forged this ahead, and then on behalf of the residents, not just in Cupertino, but all around the cement and Stevens Quarry area. So um that's supportive.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
This is really um welcome news that's long awaited, and I, I think Cupertino has been taking a strong stance against the pollution by Lehigh, and the staff, city staff, has written some really strong letters to advocate for us. And the Cupertino residents have suffered for so many, many years throughout the operation of the cement plant. We, of course, are delighted that the county is exploring options to acquire it, but I wonder, um, maybe it's too early, but maybe we should mention, since they will explore options, that we can request the county to ensure Cupertino residents have a strong say on the future use of that land, and either maybe even annex a portion of it. And so that's one thing. Another thing that's mentioned by a part, I think, the Rota Frye is uh the Hammond property, that's right next to the cement plant. The, the county in 2012 ordered it to be vacated because they, they simply couldn't mitigate the pollution from Lehigh, and now that property has not been occupied. And so would the plan also consider restoration of this historical home and fund the historical restoration of that home on for Cupertino? Maybe that could be one thing that's considered. And then I have a question. Um, Lehigh Cement and the Stevens Quarry are two separate operators, so is this, does this plan include Stevens Creek Quarry also?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Uh so, so, so Chris, um, I'm not really sure whether the, the quarry itself is encompassed in this. From what I heard um during the process, there was a question about the quarry, and I, I think it was actually included in it. But when I, when I look at the more details of the referral, i- it does seem to focus a bit more on the cement factory.
So, yeah, so I think the mining operations at Lehigh are, would, would be included. Uh my, my understanding is that operations at Stevens Creek, um, which, you know, I believe the vice mayor is correct, is under separate ownership, are, are, are not, would not be.
Could we request that to be included, because otherwise, we will still have trucks going over our road?
That's a decision for council.
Yeah, I, I mean, my understanding of it, you know, having, having been right in the process as, as this is being formulated, was that um this actually does include the gravel quarry, um but i- it's also something that's in, in a very early, you know, formation. So if that's something that we want to explicitly, um, you know, uh, have as a consideration, then I, 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 I do think that we should call that out specifically. If you look at some of the, you know, language, the specific language of the referral, um it, it is kind of crafted in a way to be open to interpretation. So, so it's a really good question, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, before I go to Councilmember Moore, I, I did want to make a couple of comments here. Um, you, you know, we, we do find ourselves in a, a moment of opportunity, and I, I just wanted to kind of remind everyone of the fact that we don't get to this moment of opportunity without a lot of people working into a really, um, really granular detail and a lot of tenacity over the years. And so, y- you know, um, i- it is indeed members of the public that have, you know, provided that tenacity and a lot of the detailed work. It's also members of our council that have, you know, pushed over the years, not just our current council, but prior council as well. Um a- and so I, I would just, I, I would just point out that, you know, they're all part and parcel of what are, wh- wh- what's really just a positive thing, although it doesn't necessarily seem that way all the time. Um, you know, i- if people are advocating for a particular position um in one specific issue, okay, it may seem like, you know, that advocacy tends to attack, you know, those that ask questions and get into those details, but that's part and parcel of exactly why we are here in this moment of time, to be able to take a 100-year uh polluting and mining operation and, and start asking the critical questions as to, you know, when we're at this point, what can we be doing to potentially be, um, you know, shutting down that operation after years and years, decades of, of, of effort? And I, I think people really should ask themselves, why are we here? And, you know, why are we here with this particular council bringing this forward when there has been so much, you know, so much heat, you know, set forth in, in past years and, and past sessions to try to get to the point where we're at right now? Um, the other thing that I'll point out, you know, I, I've been talking about making sure that our communications mechanism is shored up within Cupertino, and um, you know, I, I don't feel that it would be fair for me not to mention this. Um, this is a prime example of why we need to make sure that we have the capability of communicating, of, you know, setting forth our story. This is an issue that is basically something that unites the entirety of our city. And so when I try to go forward and uh make sure that we're communicating this, it does feel kind of like, you know, uh wind behind the sails, although as it goes, you know, it's interesting that we don't have a whole lot of people out from the public, you know, looking at this this evening. Um, but at the same time, I, I, I know we have that, that support. But when I, when I say that we need to be able to communicate, you know, I leave out the fact that, you know, City Attorney Jensen, you know, basically wrote the press release, you know, skeleton, and I basically wrote the rest of it, right? And so, you know, given the fact that, that there's that much work going on, that much coordination, you know, within the mechanisms that are not really, you know, tasked with, with doing that, that's precisely what I mean. And I think we're at a fortunate point in time that we have that wherewithal on our council and in parts of our staff to be able to set that forward. But I also think that we need to take a very serious look, and not just the quality um and the, uh, you know, aspersions that are cast at that quality of, of detail and commitment uh to these various issues. Uh but also, you know, when we point out that there are particular areas that we need to look on, it would be much appreciated if we don't have, you know, piled on, you know, interest-laden aspersions cast at us, because it is precisely that type of effort that can bring forward this type of measure. So um that's the, um, that, that's the point I wanted to make. And, you know, as, as I've taken, you know, to saying uh in, in the recent past, I'm here for another nine or 10 months. You know, I'm, I'm bringing my seven years and, and then some to, to bear. And, you know, a- at the end of the day, um, you, you know, I say, you know, bless all of you, but at the same time, let's be sensible about how we go forward. Let's be sensible about how, how we go forward with this, how we go forward with any number of issues, you know, including, you know, development and, you know, be it like, you know, personal interest or profit-driven, you know, kind of motivations. I mean, people need to come to their senses with regard to what makes sense and what's fair. So thanks very much for, um, you know, entertaining that. I'll go on to Councilmember Moore at this point, uh for, you know, i- if you have further comments or would like to bring forward a motion, Councilmember Moore.
Uh, I have a couple of comments. One with, with regards to casting aspersions, I, I think that's part and parcel of being in politics and, and making, making decisions. People are going to question them, and I think that's, it's just what happens. Um, there was a statement about uh with regards to the Snyder-Hammond House, um, the conditions of, the conditions of approval from 2012, um, conditions 43 through 45, it's available on the county website. 43 and 44 essentially say you need to use this type of uh equipment and provide us information about what equipment you're using, and then in lieu of those, in lieu of doing that, in lieu of conditions 43 and 44, the mine operator may submit within 90 days of the RPA approval evidence establishing that the planning managers, to the planning manager's satisfaction, that there are legally binding restrictions precluding any occupancy of the caretaker's residence located, that's, it's the Snyder-Hammond residence. So there, there were um uh two ways they could have gone with this, and, uh, you know, we can discuss that another time. But um I think it's interesting about helping the Snyder-Hammond House in the county's responsibility. Uh, yeah, it's, it's an interesting question. Um, and I did pull up the, the agenda, it was item 13 on the Board of Supervisors meeting today. I, I do not think it includes the um, the Stevens Creek Quarry. Um, there is a quarry operation, which I would like to hear more about. Um, so they are uh um essentially grinding rock now, um and they, they had stopped back in 2014, and they had gotten a, um, approval to continue with some new equipment, I believe, in 2020, and I have some questions about that, and I want to thank a, um, community member, Rota Frye, for bringing all this information to us. She sent in a public records request information, which she had, had acquired, and I have some questions about that, because they are showing what looks like some air quality contours. I'd like to know more about that from BackMed moving forward. I, I am in complete support of um the, the acquisition by the county of this, of this property. Um, it, within the written communications provided by our city attorney, there, I believe, is a link to um the mid-pen letter, where mid-pen indicates that they would like it returned to open space. So I think that that, their, their wishes are, are really important here. Uh so, as I had said earlier, it, I just want to make sure that they have a really accurate assessment of this site, um, because it's my understanding that reclamation will return it to a usable area, uh space, but it doesn't necessarily mean that all of the contamination in the ground is cleaned up. Okay, so there might be individuals who are interested in housing down the road. Um, that would, in my understanding, would be something further for remediation beyond what a reclamation plan would provide. But if, uh, if people are interested, go to the county website, just Google Lehigh, Santa Clara County, and you'll find that they have a tentative 2019 reclamation plan, uh which is different from the 2012 plan. Um, and one of the things that changed is at the West Materials Storage Area, um, uh the designation for it has changed, and I don't want to get the name wrong. Um, it's now considered reclassified as Class B mining waste, and apparently that is a significant change. So I will end with that, and I, I am in support of, of this, this purchase, and I look forward to seeing what happens moving forward. I was told it'd be about five to 10 years for reclamation if, once the county um uh got the, got the project, got the property, and had a plan in hand. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and speaking of having a plan, you know, I, I wish my colleagues the very best of luck. You know, I'm happy to, you know, lend the resources that I've been able to bring to bear uh up to this point. But, you know, with regard to the casting of aspersions, I, you know, I, I do want to note that we did pass um a lobbying ordinance recently, and so I absolutely agree with you. You know, you're, you're free to cast those aspersions, and, you know, people have freedom of speech, but if we have a requirement to divulge, you know, what your financial motivations are, and people are not, you know, making those, you know, particular requirements known, then it should certainly be brought to bear in terms of, you know, putting some light on it. So, um, you know, with regard to your comments, Councilmember Moore, um, you know, I did pull the referral, and what I will tell you is that when we're having these discussions, there was a specific question with regard to whether the gravel quarry was part of these discussions. And so um the answer at that time was that, yes, it was indeed part of these discussions, but if I look at the language of the final referral, um, y- yes, I, I'm parsing, you know, various subjects and, you know, conjugations of the verb to be, to see whether we're talking about, when they say the Lehigh Cement Plant and Quarry refers to multiple properties. In one sentence, it does say it is in historical or anachronism, and so, yes, it does seem like the way that this referral is written, uh it refers only to one of the properties. And so um I, I would say as a point of information that could be conveyed to the Board of Supervisors, I think we could successfully, in this letter from Cupertino, um, supporting the referral, point out the fact that, yes, explicitly, we would be interested in also looking into the other mine property that is there. Um, so um w- with regard to the other aspects of making sure that we have full information regarding reclamation and responsibilities and obligations and the scope of what needs to be done, absolutely, I, I, I would support making sure that we make mention of those uh parts of the work. But, but I also want to make sure that uh we're adhering to something that Councilmember Wei pointed out, that we have to keep our eye on the fact that this is really the, the broad-based picture is very straightforward and is fairly simple. You know, there's a referral here, they want to make sure that their staff in the county comes back in 90 days to give them some options. And so we are, we are in support a- as a basic matter, you know, of, of that referral, which is, you know, essentially what's in front of us at this point. And I, I think we can add that other material, um, you know, as, as described by yourself and others. So, um, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised at this point. Uh, Councilmember Willie, I, I will ask for a motion at, at this time, so would you like to bring forward something?
Yeah, so, so yes, I'll go ahead and make the motion to draft and prepare and submit a letter of uh in support of the uh Smithian and the county's effort to do that study for the next 90 days.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And Councilmember Willie, would you be willing to add, uh, to incorporate the comments shared by our council members in this discussion as well, within the draft of that letter?
Yes, definitely. I actually have one more comment that may or may not also help.
Okay, why don't you make that comment, and then, once you make that, I'll go ahead and second your motion.
So I, I, I was just going to make the comment, you know, that it's been my understanding that the, uh, a bo- a large amount, if not all, of the material that Stevens Creek Quarry is processing is coming from Lehigh, and that was the purpose for the illegal Hall Road, was to allow all the spoils from Lehigh to be transferred over to the Stevens Creek Quarry. Is it all, or is it most, or is it part? But I think if the uh material from Lehigh is, you know, ceases, that in itself may mean that it's not profitable for Stevens Creek Quarry to, to be in business. If and when this comes back to us, hopefully, we have, could have staff come back and tell us how those two are intertwined. So it, we may find that all they need to do is to address the, the Lehigh, and it automatically takes care of the, the entire area. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie, and um, you know, a- as, either the And, um, you know, a- a- as either the drafter or the person in charge of who's going to be drafting, let me refer this to City Attorney Jensen. So Chris, um, with regard to Councilmember Willie's last comment, do you feel you have sufficient guidance with regard to the interplay between, uh, the rock quarry and the cement plant? To, uh, add that, you know, particular point to the other, uh, ones that have been raised, uh, tonight in this, uh, evening's discussion?
Yes, sufficient guidance, um, additional research will be required, but sufficient guidance to do that.
Okay, I, anyway, at the very least, I think that there could be, you know, just mention of that in, uh, with regard to that haul road that was unpermitted and then discovered after the fact. So, um, and but I'm sure that you can make a nexus and, you know, follow up in the manner that Councilmember Willie is is describing as well, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. All right, so the motion, uh, is made by Councilmember Willie. I've seconded, unless someone else wants to second, I'm more than happy to, you know, take my second off the table, and someone else wants to go on the record as, uh, seconding this one. I don't see any hands raised. Um, are there any other further comments or questions from, uh, my colleagues in council, Councilmember Way?
Yes, I have a question on exactly the, um, motion. The motion is to authorize, um, our city attorney to write a letter incorporating all the points that's been mentioned by the council? Or exact what points are we?
Well, the ones that I have, Councilmember Way, um, have to do with the, um, uh, assessment of contamination, uh, how long a reclamation can be delayed, um, contamination issues with, uh, regard to consideration of, you know, potential development, um, and making sure that that is, you know, placed at the forefront if, um, you know, the development issue becomes part of the, uh, calculus. I I don't expect it to be at this point. I mean, a- at this point, it becomes fairly clear that this is a ninety day referral to the county to provide, you know, options for for closure in in particular. Um, and then Councilmember Willie mentioned, um, talking about the, um, the haul road that goes or that went, I should say, between, uh, the cement factory and the gravel quarry. And, um, you know, the repercussions coming off of the, um, the 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 potential closure of the cement factory and and whether that would help to alleviate, uh, some, if not all, of the concerns regarding the other mining operations. So, um, so so that's what I have. I mean, um, uh, Chris, do you have a different or, um, additional, um, set of factors, um, that you are tracking?
No, I think I think that's that's a that's a good summary. I have, I have, I've been taking notes of council's comments and, um, will i- i- incorporate them, you know, in into the comments the city provides, um, uh, you know, uh, understanding that, the drafting will be a process, there will be some discretion involved in that.
And surely there will be follow up opportunities to, uh, community.
Mayor Paul, can I ask, follow up with with this? So, but our support is uncon- is not conditioned upon all this, right? I mean, I mean, I think we really need to say we're fully supported, but maybe these are follow up questions that that we can discuss.
Yeah, no, I didn't hear any conditioning upon, um, you know, the the other points being discussed by council.
All right, because I I think it's important that we express our in- unconditional, I mean, support for this process to go through.
Right, I mean, it's support for for all with additional points, you know, that, um, we're we're raising and would like to have considered at some point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, how I, oh, I came upon, um, uh, Robert Salisbury's name was looking at a, a letter the county had posted, which was a statement of inadequacy for their, um, financial assurance cost estimate. And that was, um, for their reclamation. And they had about twenty-seven points, um, uh, that that they had took issue with for, uh, their, um, face calculation. And, uh, the new calculation per the the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, um, they said was due February eleventh. And so I wanted to know if the new, uh, cost estimate was provided. They had a cost estimate of around sixty million dollars. And what I learned is that they were given an extension, um, until April to provide that that, uh, dollar amount. Now, that's important because you're talking about a ninety day turnaround from, um, the county to provide them some with some information. So it would be really important, I would assume, for the county to know what the estimate is for, um, reclamation. If it's really more like a hundred million dollars, uh, the the county needs to, um, have that uh, that dollar amount, um, in on hand. I just want to bring that up, and all of these things are, like I said, they're available on the county website if if, uh, anyone else wants to look it up. Um, and then some of the questions that I have, I can, I I can get the answers offline with regards to, um, the air, uh, quality contamination, uh, reporting that they, um, have with regards to the quarry operation which they restarted. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Chow.
So, um, one more point is, uh, we hope that, um, to stress that Cupertino and neighboring cities who have suffered from the pollution should have a strong say on the future use of, uh, the property. And I think when they explore options invariably, they are going to talk about uses of the property. So I think we should state that, uh, now in the letter.
Uh, one more time, Vice Mayor Chow, can you summarize that? What what do you want added to the letter?
The neighboring cities who have suffered, uh, from the pollution for many years should have a strong say in the future use of the property.
Okay. Um, I, I'm fine with adding that point. Councilmember Willie, are you okay with that as the mover?
Absolutely.
Okay, so so I'm I'm fine with adding that as a secondary of motion. All right, um, Madam City Clerk, if you could please, uh, conduct a roll call vote for the motion on the table.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We are now on item nineteen, and the subject of item nineteen is the consideration of an update on the Via Cupertino On Demand Community Shuttle Pilot Program. There's a proposed grant application from the California State Transportation Agency, or CALSTA, uh, the Transit and Inner City Rail Capital Program under, uh, that agency, or T I R C P. Uh, we have a presentation from Chris Correa, our Senior Transit and Transportation Planner, who, um, is our key staff person, helping us administer the Via Shuttle program. And, um, yeah, I, we we've been, um, working, uh, a- as well. Uh, I've been working the last few days to try to refer Chris to, uh, a couple of our partner and neighboring agencies, uh, in Santa Clara and and San Jose, uh, to see whether we can perhaps partner with multi-jurisdictional, you know, possibilities of expanding our Via Shuttle program. So, Chris, thanks very much, and, um, please take away the presentation.
All right, and thank you for your your help with that outreach, Mayor Paul. Um, good evening, council members and members of the public. The Via Cupertino Pilot Program began in October twenty nineteen, and this pilot is currently scheduled to end in October of two thousand twenty-two this year. Um, to date, um, at the time that this presentation was made, the the programs provided almost seventeen thousand trips. The most, the majority of these trips happened, um, from the launch of the program in October twenty nineteen, right up until March of twenty twenty, when when COVID, um, when the shelter in place orders were given by the county. We've done nearly three hundred EDA rides in our two wheelchair accessible vans. And since the relaunch in October, we've done almost two thousand new rides. Uh, this slide here shows you, um, a really, uh, really, it's like a graphic timeline of of the ridership since the launch of the program, uh, into February. Um, and what you can see is since when we originally launched this program in October twenty nineteen, we had a, uh, a rapid increase in ridership right until about, uh, March, when, um, COVID struck. And then we did run and operate through COVID until August, with very limited ridership to different destinations, mostly, um, Whole Foods and those types of essential destinations. And then since we relaunched, that is the teal, um, the teal bars on the right. So you can see we've had a steady increase, um, since relaunch. Even, um, with the Omicron variant, we saw increases, um, and we've had increases in ridership week over week. We're seeing a lot of students riding, uh, the the school use case is really strong right now. Um, and, uh, we believe that the population that's missing the most are the, um, is the daily workforce. This slide here shows, uh, is a graphic representation of our ridership since relaunch. These are pickups, and then the next slide are drop offs. And if I toggle back and forth, you can kind of see the movement patterns. Um, and what's really interesting is that, uh, the destinations really have not changed, um, from pre-COVID to since relaunch, um, same destinations, just less volume. This slide shows you, uh, what has changed, and that is the hours during the day in which the system's busy. Uh, before, we had sort of this commute pattern in the morning and in the evening. Uh, now we seem to get, uh, most of our ridership in the afternoon, uh, right around three o'clock, four o'clock. This slide also shows hours in which we don't operate. And that, uh, that's, that represents people that tried to get a ride on the app that get a message that we're we're not currently operating. So it's an interesting thing for us to to track also, um, as we consider expanding in the future and as funding allows us to expand our hours. This slide here shows, um, some results from, uh, a survey. We've done, uh, a few different surveys during the course of the pilot program. Some conducted by the city, other surveys conducted by Via to riders. So we get a good sense of who our riders are, how they're riding Via. And one of the main takeaways is that we've learned is that most of our Via riders are not VTA riders, and if Via didn't exist, would be driving single occupant vehicles, which is exactly what we were hoping for. This, we know that sixty-nine percent of our riders switched from driving to to riding, uh, Via. And then we also have some people that were using the Ride program, that's a volunteer program from West Valley Community Services. Some were taking Lyft and Uber, a very small percentage walking or biking. Um, and some, interestingly, that would not have traveled at all, which is showing that we're providing a social service as well. This is showing, um, you are our destinations, how they really have not changed much from pre-COVID to after COVID or relaunch, I guess we're still in COVID. The one thing that's kind of interesting is that we didn't have a lot of people, uh, going to Kaiser before. At least it wasn't in our top five, and now it is since relaunch. But still, Caltrain is making up the bulk of our, um, requests. It's the most popular destination, um, and the most popular pickups point, followed by the the schools, um, all of our middle and high schools throughout the community. Would, when we look at the data to see who's riding, we have a inter- we have a, we have a mix. We have about half, um, represented in blue are riders that are are, I'm sorry, represented in blue are riders that were, had signed up before COVID, um, with the original launch of the program and are now riding with us again. And in red, those are new riders. So what we're hoping is that as, uh, return to work plans, uh, take effect in spring and summer, that will grow both in new riders that were not familiar with Via and also the old riders will come back, um, and ride again. This is my favorite slide, and a good segue into the next part of this presentation about the grant opportunity. This is a graph, graphic that shows you where people live that have downloaded the app and ride Via in Cupertino. And you can see that, uh, it's not, obviously, in Cupertino, we have the highest concentration. But in Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, even down in Campbell, um, and San Jose, there are quite a few people that are, that have the app on their phone that are riding Via, obviously, that either work in Cupertino or are students. So with that, uh, the second part of our, the presentation tonight centers around a grant opportunity that we recently learned about, um, and were interested in applying for. And we wanted to brief the council on this, uh, because it's a five year grant. And our current Via program expires in October two thousand twenty-two. The grant is administered by the California State Transportation Agency, or CALSTA. It's, um, a grant that is generally meant for rail projects, large capital infra- infrastructure projects. However, this year does offer funding for microtransit projects that can boost rail ridership. Um, and the grant is generally, um, favors projects that are larger in scale, that serve, um, large communities that are gener- that have, uh, communities of concern or, um, equity zones, lower income areas included, and, uh, and bring riders to rail transit. And so what we're proposing is an expansion of the Via program into Sunnyvale, um, Santa Clara and San Jose, and also including adding the Mountain View Caltrain Station and El Camino Hospital as, um, as islands, so they would not be in the main service area. This grant, because it's funded by the state's Greenhouse Gas Fund, would require the use of EV fleet, uh, a fully EV fleet. The deadline for this grant is coming up rapidly, it's in, uh, in on March third. And the grant would pay for, um, half of the capital and operating expenses in accordance with the FTA, um, guidance, which is what this grant utilizes. We don't have hard numbers yet, but I can talk about what what we're loo- what we're currently looking at. Um, so, uh, the grant is a, a five year long grant that if awarded, we would likely begin in January two thousand twenty-three. From what we're we're designing right now, a, we're trying to design the most competitive application possible. So we're we're mapping out, and you have attached to your staff report this evening, two phases of an expansion. And so what it's looking like is that in the first year, the the estimates would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars, and that that each year would increase by approximately a hundred thousand dollars, reaching five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that would sort of be the steady state operating costs moving forward. Uh, and the reason for that slow increase is to give communities buying in, uh, an opportunity to to find the funds, the matching funds that each community would need to, uh, commit. And then also to allow us to include some of these equity zones and other, um, areas to make our application as competitive as possible. So that is still being worked out, those numbers are still being worked out. We have been in discussions with all of the communities. And, uh, we have had an informational meeting with Cal STA to ask questions about the grant. And, um, we were told that it, the notification of an award, if we do go after this grant, will be in June two thousand twenty-two. We were also told that, uh, candidly, that, um, if this grant, uh, if we're awarded a partial award, um, that it's very likely this particular grant will get, uh, replenished by the state because there's another, uh, large expenditure coming through the pipeline. So regardless of whether or not this particular application, um, is successful, we we are definitely looking for opportunities to expand Via because it's been, um, a program that's been really, um, enjoyed by the community. And the one question, the one thing people always ask or complain about is that they can't go to more destinations. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council, I'm available for questions. And also Krista Glotzbach, uh, who is the Western U.S. Partnerships Manager for Via, is also, um, online tonight with us. If you have any particular questions for Via, she'd be happy to answer them as well.
Great, thanks, Chris, and thank you, Krista. Before we go to our members of council with questions or follow up comments, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the public for any members of the public that would like to speak on item number nineteen. And I see Jennifer Griffin with a hand raised, welcome, Jennifer. I'll remind our members of the public that you'll please need to have your hand raised by the time Jennifer is done speaking in order to be called on to speak on this item number nineteen. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Uh, yes, I've tried the Via program, it sounds like it's been a real success. Um, I think it's a really, really good plan. I'm just gonna throw in a word of caution here since I've just become so pessimistic about our state. Are we going to be, if we accept this money from the state, are we gonna be beholden to anything? Does this mean that we can keep operating Via with the current, um, uh, vehicles? Does this mean that we can keep operating via with the current um uh vehicles that we have? We're not gonna get a mandate that all of a sudden we don't, because we accepted the money, that we have to start putting in railroad tracks? Or we have to put in light rail down the middle of Stevens Creek Boulevard? I mean, I I hate to say this, I am so jaded by some of the stuff coming out of Sacramento. That I would want to make sure that if we're accepting money for this, that we get to do it our way. Our way is working and um local control all the way. So I just gonna throw that in there because, believe me, we've been getting such a load of goods from Sacramento. That I want to make sure that they are not dictating to us that we have to put in certain vehicles if we accept their money. Um has anybody checked that? But I think via's been a real success. And what happens after five years? Uh, has anybody thought down the road for that um bad pun? Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer, and our next and final speaker on this item is Peggy Griffin, welcome Peggy.
Good evening, council members and staff. Um I I like the idea of adding El Camino Hospital and the Mountain View Caltr- Trans Station. Those are two big destination destinations that can cover a lot of areas. If people want to go to the Castro Street and have dinner, then, you know, the Caltrain Station there is close enough that you could walk the rest of the way. And El Camino Hospital, a lot of doctors and dentists and stuff are the in that area. So getting to the hospital where there's not very good parking allows you to do that. Um my question is, as you add more areas, what about the wait time? Are you going to add more vehicles? And also Cupertino has been um adding more bike lanes and encouraging people to bike around. Are these vehicles also gonna have bike racks so that you could bike to, you know, a bike path? Or something like that? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy, and let's bring it back to uh Chris and Krista before we uh call on Vice Mayor Chow as our first council member. Commenter or questioner, uh did you want to speak to uh some of the questions raised by our members of the public here? Chris or Chris?
Sure, I'd be happy. Just to mention that um are all of our vans do have bike racks now, um so we're excited about that. Um and that the only mandate from the state um that we're aware of is that the vans would all need to be electric. Um and we would have to have considerably more vans on the road for the expansion, more than twice the number. Um we're looking at much more than that, depending on which which year. Um regarding the other question about um the link between this and any other state rules. I'm not aware of any, but I would have to check with the city attorney.
And how about the wait times with regard to expanding the jurisdictions?
We don't, well, that's a good question, because we currently are enjoying very low wait times because of ridership. So um we we when we contracted with Via, we're targeting a fifteen-minute wait time, we're currently around eight minutes. Um but we will have adequate supply to maintain that fifteen-minute goal. Um and um that's that by having more adding more supply, we can control that.
Okay, very good. From council, our first questions or comments are from Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Kellmar Willie.
So so this five-year grant on the it seems we are adding destinations. But are we adding partners to like Sunnyvale and Mountain View? They are not rejoining the program, right? Our radius of operation is still Cupertino, maybe up to Lo- uh Kaiser, Lawrence. So that's still not changed?
No, the it this grant would involve expanding and having um those cities partner with us. Um Mountain View, Mountain View is actually not part of the partnership, but right now we're talking to Santa Clara and Sunnyvale and actually San Jose as well. And Cupertino would continue to pay for its own fleet. Um but the as a user, it would seem like one large area and each city would be contributing.
Oh, so so this grant, we will need buying from those cities? Do we have the buying from them or not?
We we have, we have been in talks with each city um to apply for the grant. Uh we need letters of recommendation and so far, um most have have given their support. We're still talking to Santa Clara, Santa Clara.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
So basically, if we get the grant, we also commit to a five-year um funding from the city annually for this program. And likely, we will need to double the number of shuttles. But then we would pay fifty percent, so we will be paying about the same as we do now.
We would be paying only for our portion. So actually, the the slide that I showed that uh where I talked about the cost being approximately two hundred thousand in the first year. Um that means that Cupertino would be paying only two hundred thousand in the first year versus now we're paying approximately one point one million per year. So the cost would be considerably less to Cupertino and to other cities.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Vice Mayor, next we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, great, uh thanks for the presentation, Chris. Um actually, it's great to uh get this update with positive uh results. And it's uh great to hear that uh our neighboring cities are looking at the possibility of joining. So that being said, a few technical questions. So from my memory, you know, we originally allocated one point eight million dollars. And it I think that meant through the October timeframe. And so it's currently just scheduled through October, which maybe we're going to extend tonight. Is the one point eight million dollars sufficient to go beyond October?
Uh we expect to use the one point seven five million dollars to get to October. That's i- assuming we consider we don't have any more COVID outbreaks and ridership rebounds in the way that we're expecting. Uh so we would need to come back to council and figure out a way to cover the gap between October to January.
Okay, so um. The fact that we had COVID and we kind of greatly reduced it. And yet, the one point eight is still, one point seven five is still gonna last through October. Uh does it look like it actually costed on a per month without COVID basis? It would have cost us more than the one point seven five?
What happened, council member, was that this program was scheduled to end uh a long time ago and we took a pause for a year. So that's what that's why the math isn't adding up.
Great, okay, so then, that being said, okay, everything's uh uh copacetic at that point. When we originally uh had the meeting and allocated the money, we knew we would be subsidizing the rides. In hindsight now, um did the subsidy of rides uh decrease? Or are we still subsidizing them at the same amount that we did when it was la- or shortly after launch? When it was kind of an up and running project? Or more, if it's possible, to what degree are we subsidizing the rides now? Um the number then, um I think maybe like five dollars a ride, we'd be subsidizing or something like that?
So I don't have the exact figure per ride, it's hard, it's really hard to calculate over the length of the pilot. But I but what I can tell you is that our most efficient month economically was March, the week between February and March twenty twenty. That was when we were needing to order more vans because ridership was was going through the roof. And we didn't have enough vans to meet the demand, so the wait times got a little bit longer. That's when we saw the most sharing happening within the vans. Um and then the more sharing that occurs, the more efficient the program is because you only have one driver for multiple passengers. So what we what happened after COVID was that we're really repeating that same pattern of relaunch. Um we're we're trickling back up, so we're still in a lean period from a um subsidy perspective per passenger. But the busier the system gets, the more sharing that occurs and the more efficient economically it becomes.
So probably my last uh comment on on trying to get to the to the dollar numbers. So if we, you know, if right now we say, well, the one point seven five million carries it through October. And then conceivably, I think our original plan was, then we could reevaluate at that time and determine what the future was gonna be. But if we were to say, gee, uh let's consider renewing it beyond October. I I think I'd sure like to know and see some type of applaud in terms of the subsidy. I think in the very beginning, we knew that we couldn't make it sustainable if we're always uh subsidizing. But if we see that the subsidy subsidy is in fact decreasing over time and and we kind of see that coming down. It gives us a lot of hope to keep it going, so it continues down. Terminating means it would have to be from scratch. The users would again have to relearn, you know, that it's up and running and things of that nature. I I don't, I guess you can't really answer that tonight, but when it does come to us for continuation beyond October. Hopefully, uh we have uh more of an understanding of that uh subsidy, because that's coming out of our residents' tax dollars.
Sure, understandable. And the one thing I the one thing I could say is that um by applying for this grant, we aren't committed to continue via. Um and we our our plan is to come back to council this summer with a complete end-of-pilot report. And we can be sure to be sure to include that analysis.
Yeah, maybe one last thing to add into that, and I don't think you have it tonight. But you said uh there've been uh uh multiple surveys done and that kind of allowed you to make that pie chart and stuff. I thi- I think it's always very helpful to tell us, you know, how people were part of that survey. So that we can kind of understand, you know, uh how much weight we should put to that to that data. But very good job, thank you for the update, mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie, next we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, um Chris, first, thank you for the report. And if I want to, I just wanna clarify two points that I read about it and just make sure that I get it correctly. Uh one point is um in order to apply for this grant, actually, it is maybe not mandate. But it's it's we need other cities to be on it in order to have a chance to even get the grant. Did I get that point correctly?
I think to be competitive, we need to be bigger. This grant favors large projects.
Absolutely, so just Cupertino probably getting the grant chances are very slim. So inviting Sunnyvale, uh Santa Clara and and maybe San Jose to join us. That is to get a better, much better chance to being able to get a grant.
That that's correct, that's the goal.
Okay, thank you. And the second, so in the once if, okay, so we're being optimistic, once if we get the grant. And the maybe three cities or four cities getting together. Then our residents will be able to write via services, even though it's provided by Cupertino. But to locations in Sunnyvale and San Jose or Santa Clara, is that the whole plan?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
Idea is that it would work like one, just like it does in Cupertino, but you could now go to Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, um it's.
That always very idea, because we do want to expand services so that more ridership will be there. So my third question actually is following up with um um Councilmember Willie. You know, uh the subsidy, I I think one simple formula is we spend one point seven five million by October. How much money we receive from riders? I think then the rest is how much we, the city subsidize the uh program. Uh can with that data, can you present that data maybe in some point?
Sure, what we can do is we can look at the overall pilot program, do an analysis where we pull out the period we were not operating. Um it'll be tricky because we're, it's a little unfair because we have two launches because of the pandemic.
Right, right.
So perhaps we could do a breakdown of different periods of the pilot so that you can see what the numbers are. When when and what to expect when it becomes fully operational.
I think that would be wonderful, thank you, Chris. And another thing to follow um the um Councilmember Willie's point is, you know, survey is great. But we really need to know how many people filled in the survey. If it's ten, then the data doesn't make sense, but if it's two hundred, the data makes sense. So it'll be nice to know how many people returned the survey in order to, you know, to see the data is valid or not.
That's a good point, I can post that um on our on our city website at Via um um Cupertino.org/shuttle. I'll be sure to post that information.
Okay, thank you, Chris. One more data I would like to have, but you might not be able to get it. I understand we have so many riders and so many trips. But a rider that can mean somebody takes, one rider can take ten rides, uh uh you know, within a month. So I will consider that one rider. Are you, will you be able to get that data, how many people really take advantage of via services? Not how many trips or how many rights are taken, but how many people really taking advantage of it?
We do, we have, we have data, um so the numbers that I showed, the hard numbers are the number of uh rides taken. So if you had two people in a van, that would count as two trips. Um we do have data on um how many riders are riding. And what's interesting is um the data, I I don't have the slide with the in the deck tonight. But the the data does show us that we have a lot of people, about forty percent of our riders are receiving a discount, either a student or senior discount. And um they're making up the large majority of the trips taken. So we have a small group of super riders that love via.
Okay, sorry, just one la- one last question is, I I do, I do know that, you know, you count every rider. But if I rode the via services for ten times, I consider myself one rider. So that's what I what what I mean is how many people really writes via services, not how many trips you make.
I, you know, I could ask, uh maybe Krista um Glotzbach with Via knows. I I think that they can, they consider that at account holders, that the nomi- the terminology may be a little bit different. Krista, are you aware of how that's reported back?
We can absolutely give you that number, we don't have it tonight, but we can create a graph like you did for number of rides, but do it for a number of riders over time.
That that would be good, how many people really in our city or, you know, from other cities takes advantage of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei, next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, thank you. Yeah, that's great questions, um it will be, because if there is a small group of super riders. That probably skilled the data to look like a lot of people are using. So it that would be good to know how many individual riders are there. And I remember who we approved this. Uh the target is the average occupancy of three point five people per car. Then then we would get twelve dollars per, um our cost is twelve dollars per ride. And then we, if they are paying three dollars per ride, we subsidize nine dollars. I don't know if I remember it right. And then now, I wonder what's the current average occupancy we see? So we kind of know how much we are subsid- subsidizing per ride, do we have some number?
I know that our our current utilize, that Via calls this number the utilization rate, the amount of riders in the van at one time. Um and when our, when we initially launched, right around February, March twenty twenty, when things were getting really busy. We had a utilization rate of four to five, so surpassing our our stated goal. Um and at some times during the day, it was even higher than that. Now, we're we're back to a much lower number, I can get you the number, but it's very low. Generally, in the beginning during the launch period, a lot of trips are solo trips. Until you really get enough momentum in the system and enough passengers riding in the similar directions to make it happen. So we're s- we're we're not there yet, but I can get you uh that data.
Okay, and then uh it's great that we are working, connecting with other cities. I wonder how about Saratoga and Campbell, since you, your graph shows Campbell already have quite a few people sign up. And I think Campbell Downtown and Saratoga Downtown are good destinations that people like to visit. Um so would their cities be interested in joining? And for Neil Pitas, I I think they have their own shuttle service, not via, I don't know what are theirs. I don't know how is it working out for them?
We we can certainly reach out to more communities. We um honestly, really just because of the the rush, uh we just reached out to us. Our our nearby communities first that are really contiguous to Cupertino, um trying not to bite off more than we could chew. But um but you're right, we could include more communities and I can work with Via to come up with some costs. But um, but you're right, we could include more communities and I can work with Via to come up with some costs to have some discussions to see if that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, yeah, so um, y- y- you know. I, I, I guess just to be really open about it, Chris, I mean, a- a- all the data is in your staff report, right? With regard to, you know, how much Cupertino spent, how much we've gotten in fares, how many trips there are, right? I mean, people would do the math if they wanted to, you know, pull those numbers out, right?
Yeah, yeah, you could, you could go through and, um, especially once I post these slides.
Yeah, no, I mean, y- y- you know, i- i- there's no, there's no secret there. I mean, I, I think at the end of it. Um, you know, your, your staff report says that sixteen thousand seven hundred and eight trips have been made overall. Since the program began in October twenty nineteen, that, that's, you know, at the top of um our agenda packet, super paginated page one ninety. So we know how many trips have been made, you know, as you're defining them, if you have three people in one vehicle for one ride, that's three trips. Um, we know how much money has been spent, you know, by, you know, us on the program. We know how much money remains. We know we've collected, you know, on that same page about midway through twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars and nine cents in fares. I, I, I mean, the math can be done, but um, let, let me ask you this. You, you're familiar with the county's uh ride program, yes? It stands for Reach Your Destination Easily?
Yes.
You are? Okay, good. Um, and you, from, from your understanding. Um, i- i- is, is that cost per trip more or less than what we're spending on Via?
The, the cost, the cost for most of these systems is uh quoted hourly, so an hourly transit cost. And uh a very common hourly cost is approximately ninety dot, ninety eight dollars per transit hour of service. Um, so if you run a service nine hours a day, you just multiply it by that amount. Um, the ride program is very costly to operate and it also has uh specialized vehicles. Um, when Via's operating efficiently, it's far less expensive than any comparable programs.
Right, and, and so, I, I mean, it wouldn't surprise you to hear, I, I, I would imagine, correct me if I'm wrong. But it wouldn't surprise you to hear that on a per-trip basis, the ride program is actually still much more expensive than the Cupertino Via program. Um, e- even in, you know, a pulled down month, um, you, you know, w- w- would that surprise you to learn that?
It would not surprise me.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's actually, you know, a- a- and at the end of the day, it speaks to a service and an unmet need. Um, is how I'm interpreting it. Um, you know, you're looking at sixteen thousand seven hundred and eight trips since the inception of our program. I mean, I, I see that as that many trips that would not have otherwise been serviced by uh public transit. I mean, w- would you say that's a, or, or at least if it were, it would, you know, be done so in a less efficient um manner time-wise? Y- y- you think that's a fair statement?
I think that's absolutely a fair statement and, and just anecdotally, anecdotally, speaking with um. With hundreds of people um about, about via services, uh, being the point person for Via, for the city. Um, a lot of people say that they, they're, 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 they're taking trips they wouldn't have taken before. A lot of seniors have said their um, their, their quality of life has increased. I had one person tell me they bought ice cream before, for the first time in a long time because they used to wait for VTA bus. And ice cream would melt by the time they got home. So we've heard a lot of um heartwarming stories. So it doesn't surprise me and, and um, the, the, the most impressive thing I think has been the amount of people going to Caltrain. Um, I have a bonus slide if you're interested in seeing it, but um, that I didn't show for lack of time. But um, but it's been the, the number amount of people going to Caltrain has been really um impressive, I think.
Yeah, no, I, I'd be happy to, you know, see that slide and ask you to bring it up if you wanted to show it to the public at this time.
Sure. Uh, let me just pull it up. It's worth pointing out, um, hold on one sec. Okay, so this is um, this shows, this particular slide shows trips from the region to Apple Park. Um, and this is in twenty twenty, this is in twenty twenty-two. So this is showing kind of like the reduced amount of, of uh trips happening. This is in twenty twenty to Caltrain in Sunnyvale. And you can see the wide range of geography coming from all over Cupertino to Caltrain. And then in twenty twenty-two, there's still quite a bit through the pandemic and in the relaunch, just a reduced volume. So I thought those were worth sharing.
I, I mean, it's a reduced volume, but we're only in February of twenty twenty-two after all. I mean, uh, so, yeah, a- a- and, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna scratch a sore point or, you know, pick on a scab or anything. Um, but I, I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, mention this. Um, you know, as, as our sitting board member uh for the West Valley Cities on VTA. Uh, I, I, I do wanna, you know, kind of share with the public our experiences with. You, 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 you know, trying to apply for grant money with regard to um innovative transit through our local county transportation agency. And so we were actually late, right, uh, to uh apply to that. We were actually, you know, from, from our own perspective, I, I, and we, we, we hashed this out with VTA staff. But we were discouraged, right, from, from VTA is, is what, you know, we're, um, you know, putting out there. I, I, I mean, a- a- and let me just preface this by also saying, I'm very appreciative of the fact that our staff right now is putting forward the. This, this proposal in the context of a, of a grant proposal, right? And then it's not only just limited to Cupertino, but with the eye on uh also not just keeping it multi or, or expanding it to multi jurisdictions. But also, um, you know, adopting the idea of electrification of the fleet, which is something that I've also been working on. Um, you know, in, 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 in my spare time, I guess, uh, to try to encourage that, that to happen. But i- i- in terms of, you know, kind of backing up and looking at some of the lessons learned from our experiences with that grant proposal. I mean, is there anything that you could, you know, bring to the forefront uh here? In, in terms of, you know, what are the things that we have learned from that episode? Um, you know, stipulating that, yes, you know, the, the, the very existence of this agenda item, together with a grant proposal discussion. Uh, i- is evidence that we're moving forward with a lot of, you know, good ideas. But wa- was there anything that you wanted to kind of, you know, uh, debrief the public on and just kind of, you know, go forward with any lessons learned? Or, you know, i- if it's complete defense, I understand that as well. But was there anything that, you know, we, we think that we can kind of glean from that? And, and also, I, I'm on the VTA board until the end of the year as well, right? So I, I, I can keep an eye on that, even though the innovative grant funding, unfortunately, I don't think is coming back to us in this particular uh calendar year. Um, or fiscal cycle. Um, but, you know, perhaps someone, um, you know, listening or someone talking to somebody else. Um, Councilman Moore sits on our VTA PAC, the Policy Advisory Committee, that has a member from each of the cities. You know, kind of can carry that, 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 uh, you know, baton forward and communicate these types of lessons learned to, to others.
Sure, yeah, I think we can, we can definitely take away that we need to, you know, go after grant funds whenever they are available to us. And um, and push back a little bit on um some of the comments or parameters that are given for particular grants to clarify. Um, and that's what we've tried to do with this particular application is, you know, to take extra time to meet with the grantor. Um, and learn about what the rules and regulations are. Um, for that particular VTA grant, um, I overheard, uh, I, I, I was, I was in a room at, at a committee meeting where I was told. Um, that this type of program wouldn't um, wouldn't qualify for that particular fund and that it wasn't innovative. Um, I know there's been a lot of back and forth, so it's, it's water under the bridge at this point. But um, I did learn from Cal STA that uh we can use other grant funds to make up the local match if we are awarded this grant. And so I do have my eye on that same grant when it does come open again, maybe in the, in future calendar years, the innovative transit pot from Measure B. Um, and I would certainly go after it, of course, next time with more vigor.
Absolutely, and, you know, I'm, I'm so glad to hear that with the idea that if the funding is there, apply for the grant if you possibly can. You know, get on top of it early, um, and, you know, put your ducks in a row, get everything lined up. And then I, I, I will uh kind of uh bookend this by pointing out that. Um, you know, and, and I'd imagine you probably know this, but the Reach Your Destination Easily. Um, you know, program actually got the residual money from that grant, right? Um, that had we applied for it, we would almost certainly have, have, have scored better. And so there was a bit of money even left over after that. Uh, for, you know, what, basically, you know, the, the way the board voted was that essentially any program. Um, would have uh gotten that couple hundred thousand dollars. And, and in fact, I, I will even say that I tried to get that reopened. So that Cupertino could grab that, you know, couple hundred, I think it was like two hundred and sixty thousand or, or so. Um, it was unsuccessful, you know, something like an eleven to one vote on the VTA board. But I, I'm just really glad to hear that and I'm glad we're having this, you know, public discussion about the idea that. You know, l- l- let's keep a, a lookout and, you know, please absolutely encourage your, your colleagues and, you know, keep that line of communication going. Because y- y- you know, you just never know in terms of, especially just trying of late to, you know, kind of reach out to other jurisdictions. We have lines of communication that are open and, you know, uh, ears to the ground that, you know, may not be heard from, you know, all the different directions. Even though, uh, we have very committed staff, you know, such as, uh, you know, y- yourself, that very much exemplifies all the great work that, that we're doing. You know, to put forward uh these types of amenities for the community. But um, yeah, yeah, so, so thank you for the work that you're doing and will continue to do. And thank you for, you know, kind of moving this log forward. And uh, I, I, I will just say in closing, you know, the um, the, the, the actual um cost per ride. Uh, cost per trip is, is pro- i- is, is competitive with a lot of VTA programs out there. If you're talking about express buses from South County over to places like Mountain View. Uh, if you were to look at the cost, you know, per, per trip. Um, but of course, in the West Valley, we really don't have, um, you know, transit to speak of. So um, let me go ahead and uh bring forward a, a, a motion. Um, if we wanna have further discussion on this item, fine. Um, but I'm gonna go ahead and move the staff recommendation. Um, that uh council authorized the application uh for this particular um grant proposal. That's been uh discussed here this evening. And so um, that would be uh in particular, uh, the grant application to Cal STA. To fund fifty percent of our shuttle costs in the future. Um, may I have a second for that motion? And Vice Mayor Chow, I do see your hand is raised.
I'm happy to second. I have a comment later.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for seconding the motion and please proceed with your comment at this time.
So I wondered besides VTA funding, whether um we could also re pursue state level. Or even federal funding. I mean, the state is now has SB nine, biggest concern is parking as people subdivide lots and have duplex. And this program is successful is of statewide interest. Because that really resolve a lot of this parking concerns. Um, for areas we, without uh bus or transit. So maybe uh our assembly member, I think, right, her, his new district would include Sunnyvale and Santa Clara and Cupertino. Might be interested in um getting a fund from the state since we have like. Some twenty-five billion dollars or forty billion dollars surplus. Yeah.
Uh, great, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, any other comment on this motion on the table? Well, you, I, I'm gonna go ahead and make a comment on this, you know, um. So, so transit, a- a- and this is, you know, I'm, I'm speaking um from a, a somewhat informed personal perspective. I mean, I, I, I've had about a year and a few months on the VTA board now. Um, you know, w- w- when I look at transit, I think there are, there are basically two um really useful things that we can be doing to look to the future. I, I, I think we really need to, you know, get a, a working transit system, you know, for our area. Uh, I, I'm not really sure if what we're, you know, um, wh- wh- what we're supporting uh i- is workable right now. I wish we would look to the future. Um, but this is not so much that, th- th- this is not trying to look at, you know, the really innovative um ideas out there. For getting us, um, you know, very far distances in a very brief amount of time and thereby, you know, solving just really broad-based economic. And um, you know, housing-based uh i- issues as well. Um, but the other part of the transit equation, you know, I, I, I think is gonna be the revolution that's gonna be happening. On a, on a dual full front. Um, and i- 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 in just what we normally think of as cars and just, you know, personal vehicles. Um, one part is gonna be the electrification of those vehicles. The other part is gonna be the way they get us around from point to point. And, you know, when we look at this program, it really does look like we're getting a head start. And we're looking at a lot of analytics. We're able to, you know, help out with um the various data points. Uh, in, in what I consider to be a fairly obvious and at this point, uh, inev- inevitable um shift over towards. Um, crowdsourcing all of this um information and efficiently using. Um, you know, vehicles to get multiple people from various points. And when you, when you take into account the fact that we have a lot of software coming in, a lot of uh sensor functionality. Um, you, you know, I, I, I think we're really kind of getting ahead of the curve here, but also it's at a very appropriate time to be doing so. I look at the numbers, y- you know, and people can correct me if I'm wrong, but I calculated it out as we were talking. I think it's something like forty-three dollars a ride right now. And as we're subsidizing it, twenty thousand dollars, you know, i- it's something like forty-one seventy-five or something like that. But, you know, ride, I think starts to push three figures, you know, the, the Reach Your Destination Easily program. Uh, but, but I think that we do have to look at it in the context of how much our county transit system costs. And when you look at various types of lines and, you know, the various things that are being serviced um in other parts of the county. Um, you know, our, our residents really aren't using, you know, a form of transit. So i- we, we've actually had to step up in Cupertino and deliver that for, you know, some part of our sector, some, you know, portion of our, uh, o- of our population. I do think that this is something that's gonna amplify and grow if we, you know, keep on investing in it. Um, I realize it's not, you know, it's not, it's not cheap by any, you know, means. I wish that our county uh agency would step up and, you know, realize what we're doing. Um, and I, I, I think at this point, you know, if, if it basically goes, it takes a, you know, hard left and stops. Um, I, I think that this is an idea that is absolutely going to uh take hold um in other places. And I think it'll come back at us, you know, in, in one way, shape or form. I would support this right now. I know, I know it's not a super cost-effective. Um, but I think that looking at the data in the more busy months, um, there are, um, you know, a, a lot of people being serviced. And it's not anywhere near the, you know, forty some odd dollars uh per, per trip that I'm calculating. Um, so, you, you know, I, I, I realize this is a cost benefit analysis. Um, but, you know, getting that information out in the open, um, i- 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 is something that I don't think that we should shy away from in terms of. You know, just trying to, you know, talk about it and, and what the other, you know, possibilities are. So, you know, I, I really do see this as the future of the last mile. Um, you know, when it really comes down to uh the guts of real transit. Uh, you know, for me, I, I don't know why we wouldn't be aiming at like two hundred miles an hour to get to the Central Valley. And solve their economic woes, um, and also our, our housing crisis. And uh one, one fell yet, um, albeit very, um, they're very, very hard earned swoop. Um, so I think those are the dual uh natures of future transit. And, you know, to the extent that we can have a piece of that equation and we're already, you know, um, moving that along. Um, I, I think we should be doing our part. So I'll be supporting the motion that's on the table. Is there any other comment before we take a vote on the item? I don't see any other hands raised, and so Madam City Clerk, if you could please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Most carries unanimously.
Okay, well, thanks very much. We're on to item number twenty at this point. Uh, this is also under ordinances and action items. Item number twenty is consideration of an update on the Stevens Creek Boulevard Steering Committee. And consideration of the City of Cupertino's participation in the Stevens Creek Boulevard Transit Vision Study. Uh, again, we have Chris Correio, our Senior Transit and Transportation Planner, to provide the staff report here or the staff presentation. Um, take it again, uh, Wei, Chris. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmembers again. Um, I'll make this one a little bit more brief. Um. So this project. Um, so this project, um, is, the last time that we were in front of the council, uh, was actually in November twenty twenty. Um, and prior to that, uh, in July twenty nineteen, the council had approved a resolution that was in support of a visioning process, um, colla- really in support of collaborating with our neighbors on, um, our neighbors along Stevens Creek Boulevard on conducting a, uh, multi-city vision process, um, one that's really centered around, um, multimodal transportation, so from the pedestrian level, and also it, one that would consider high-capacity transit. Uh, the, the council, leading up to, in the summer of twenty nineteen, uh, the council had formed a subcommittee to work with staff to work out some of the, the wording of that resolution. Um, and, um, I believe, uh, two prior councilmembers, uh, worked, had worked on that, and, um, ultimately was adopted. And the same process happened in neighboring cities, so in Santa Clara and San Jose also adopted resolutions, uh, to work together, basically stating to work together. Um, after that time, uh, shortly after that time, the City of San Jose, uh, formed a steering committee comprised of elected officials. Um, and then we, the staff brought a, an item back to council in November twenty twenty. That's the most recent time this item's been before council, um, and the council left it at that time not to move forward, uh, with participating in a study. Um, after that time, there was a, a considerable pause taken, uh, when Cupertino decided not to move forward. The other cities were trying to figure out their next steps, and then COVID struck, um, and there, the pause grew to be even longer. But over the last six to eight months, um, the, the, the staff working group has been having, um, very frequent meetings to discuss the different issues each community wanted to incorporate into the scope of work, and really in an effort to, to get something together, a scope of work that each community could get behind. Um, and that's resulted in what's attached to the staff report, the proposed scope of work. Um, in terms of the landscape, uh, and changes in the landscape, um, from then to now, one of the big key things has been that the Metropolitan Transportation Commission has included the Stevens Creek Corridor in its long-range plan, and that just happened in October twenty twenty-one. So that really does kind of elevate the importance of having a cohesive vision document for the Stevens Creek Corridor. And I know I keep saying that, and I'll just point out the, the way that the group is defining that is from Deansville College, or actually a little bit past it, at eighty-five, all the way to Deardong Station. The most recent meeting, uh, steering committee meeting occurred, um, uh, in December, and Councilmember Moore attended, uh, on behalf of Cupertino. Um, presentations were given by San Jose on a separate but, uh, somewhat connected project, which is the San Jose Airport Connector Project. Um, that's a separate effort that San Jose has undertaken to connect Deardong with San Jose Airport. Um, that presentation was given, and also Iteras gave a presentation on this same scope of work. Um, and actually, there's a, um, representative from Iteras here this evening, Sean, uh, Daly, um, who's a senior planner with Iteras if any questions come up later. Um, I don't want to read through the, all the discussion slides, so if Councilmore, uh, may want to give a, a, an update on this meeting later. But I will say the one takeaway that we really, uh, that I really got from this last meeting was that there seems to be, uh, really a, um, a true interest in doing something innovative and different in this corridor from, uh, a transportation project perspective. Not, you know, another light rail project, not bus rapid transit, but something that's truly innovative and different. Um, and that seems to be the one takeaway that I've heard, both in the staff-level working group and the steering committee. Um, so if Cupertino, uh, does want to move forward and participate in this study, it is a nineteen-month project, and it, it would begin this summer, potentially in fall, at the cost of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, fifty-nine dollars. Um, we would return with a funding agreement at a future meeting in March, uh, between Cupertino and the City of San Jose. San Jose would really, uh, be the, the, the lead, uh, on this project in terms of managing the contract. Um, but in terms of the project itself, the, um, both committees would continue, um, moving forward, uh, to sort of shepherd the project through the, the working group at the staff level, would handle more of the technical, um, technical elements of the project, and then, of course, the, um, elected officials would continue to meet in the steering committee. And, and that's, I did say it was going to be a short presentation, but I wanted to leave as much time for discussion as possible. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, Chris, uh, I'm going to go ahead and bring this over to our members of the public that want to comment on this. And so I've got two hands raised right now, one from Jennifer Griffin, one from Rania Mozen, and I'll, uh, let the members of the public know again that you'll need to have your hand raised by the time our first speaker, uh, Jennifer, is concluded speaking in order to be called on for this item number twenty. Welcome, Jennifer. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, and thank you, Chris, for your very, uh, informative, um, presentation. Um, I sent the city council an email at four-thirty this afternoon. It's called, um, well, it was, I, I am concerned about some of the issues involving Cupertino being involved in the Stevens Creek Boulevard Transit Vision Study. One, number one is involvement of MTC and Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. Yeah, I've been talking about this all night, but, um, I, I'm a little bit concerned because Plan Bay Area, um, MTC had included the Stevens Creek Corridor in their, oh, God, in their long-range, Bay Area long-range plan. That makes me very, very nervous. Um, I, I really am very concerned about how Plan Bay Area was adopted, and I really, I feel, I feel uncomfortable having our Stevens Creek Corridor, our section of Cupertino, involved in MTC, because MTC has made a very, very bad example of itself this year by taking away local control, and I don't want them taking away local control of Stevens Creek Boulevard. They have no right and no reason to be sticking their nose into what Cupertino does on Stevens Creek Boulevard. Now, it's one thing if we're talking to San Jose, of Santa Clara, and Deardong, et cetera, but I don't want top-down command of what's happening in Stevens Creek Boulevard happening out of MTC, and there's too much involvement from San Francisco in this. They're sticking their nose in places where they shouldn't be involved. I'm sorry, I, I'm, I have really had enough of MTC and AVAG and San Francisco dictating to the rest of the state what they want us to do. So nothing, you know, the other thing is, um, I don't want six bus rapid transit down Stevens Creek Boulevard, our portion. I don't want to be involved with complete streets program because that means that they are closing down roads without telling the public about it. You know, roads for cars, we're just shut them down. Um, uh, okay, Valco issues with Wolf Road and traffic impact. We don't know yet with the godzillion amounts of housing that's supposed to be going in, high rises to the sky at Valco. We don't know what kind of traffic's going to be put onto Stevens Creek Boulevard. Um, we also have the San Jose urban village issue. I don't want San Jose running this whole thing. We're, we're already, I'm on the eastern end, and we're having to deal with a hundred and fifty feet right, right next to us. And, and I mean, two hundred and fifty feet. We have to get real about, we're at gridlock right now. Um, the, uh, the last one is...
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Rania Mozen, and Rania is, uh, our last speaker, as there are no other hands up on this item. Welcome, Rania. And, Rania, your, your hand is raised, but, uh, I see you're unmuted now. Did you want to speak on this item?
Yes, yeah, sorry, I was having trouble there. Um, good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, and councilmembers. Um, I'm here on behalf of Vice Mayor Chappy Jones of San Jose, and, um, on his behalf, um, we wanted to recommend for the City of Cupertino to participate in the proposed Stevens Creek Corridor Transit Vision Study. The objective of this study is to improve the quality of life for residents across our jurisdictions and net our shared communities between the major destinations of Deardong Station and San Jose and Deansville College in Cupertino. This vision is not about a predetermined transit solution. It is about evaluating all types of mobility improvements from vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian to land use considerations and creating a shared vision for a stronger, safer, and more efficient corridor. We have been working on this collaborative effort for a number of years, um, as, as Chris noted in his presentation, and we truly believe this effort will lead to fast, frequent, and reliable transit and mobility solutions. Um, also, as noted, this project is included in MTC's Plan Bay Area twenty fifty, and there is a benefit to this and to working on this vision study together. Multi-jurisdictional efforts tend to be more competitive, favorable, and lead to grant awards and funding from federal, state, and local agencies. We hope to continue our work together, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Rania, and we'll bring this back to, um, the council as well as our, um, our staff and, um, external, um, external consultant for the, um, for the project, um, for the vision study. And so, um, I don't hear follow-ups that were required from the members of the public who spoke, uh, but let me check in with, uh, with Chris and Sean. Did you want to speak and follow up before I open this up to council? Okay, I'm not seeing any, anybody, you know, uh, taking on that, uh, offer. So, so let me go ahead and bring this, uh, over to council. So, um, I can go ahead and kick us off here. Um, you, you know, I, I've been involved in this, uh, process for, uh, a number of years now, and I, I will say that when it reaches Cupertino, uh, we've always been really dedicated in making sure that our streets are unaffected. Um, that's why if you read the resolution that we passed in twenty nineteen, uh, it very, uh, much is carefully tailored, uh, to ensure that our, our street is not affected in terms of the traffic flow. Um, we specifically called out grade separation, uh, whether that be above or, or below ground. Um, and then we also actually had an extensive series of discussions back then with regard to, once it hits Cupertino, are we looking at going along Stevens Creek Boulevard, or are we looking at going along Highway two eighty? And that's why, when you look at the language of the resolution, Highway two eighty is mentioned there as well. My current understanding of this is that, um, it, it is a cohesive, uh, corridor vision study, and that doesn't just include, you know, what we typically think of as a traditional form of mass transit. That also includes pedestrian access and bicycle access. So, um, you, you know, when, when I read over our staff, uh, report, I don't get as much of that kind of a sense that we have, uh, the ability ultimately to, you know, pick and choose from those aspects of the vision, uh, study, uh, the, the corridor study we're being asked to support here, such that what could potentially transpire in ten or fifteen years, you know, is a series of, for example, bicycle and pedestrian improvements off this. Um, there, there just seems to be a, a suite, uh, a palette of options available if we go down this road. And, um, you know, somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're not making a commitment to any particular mode of, uh, transit or transportation down Stevens Creek Boulevard if we, uh, proceed with supporting, uh, the study. So, um, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll put that into a form of a, a question. Um, you know, Chris, perhaps you would be the best person to speak to that, um, from our city staff or, um, you know, I, we could ask Sean as well from Iteras, but I, I think Sean's task is a little bit different, right, is to...
Yeah. No, uh, Mayor, that was a, that was one of the points, that was a, a, a main point, um, that was discussed in these staff working groups, is that, that, that there is no, that this is mode-agnostic, um, and that this is really a true vision study where the best ideas would rise to the top.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I would even push back to the whole rise to the top, you know, part of it. I mean, I, I, I just, I, I don't want any kind of implication there being that some ideas will be chosen and kind of anointed as what we will go forward with. I, I mean, I, I, I just want to make it really clear and verify that, you know, we're, we're still driving, you know, the, the vehicle here. We're still, we're still steering the ship if we go forward with this, you know, corridor study. We have not committed to any particular mode, right?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and if we were to commit, that would happen in the future, right? It, it wouldn't be happening here, even at the time that, uh, the study was, you know, delivered or even, you know, considered. There would have to be a very, um, very explicit, uh, consent to going down any particular path for, um, a, a mode of transit. Is that, is that also...
That's, that's correct. The, at the end of this study, it's a nineteen-month study, um, and there, there is not enough, uh, scope and, and detail to, to really be studying a transit project, uh, in, in great detail. It's really meant to be more of a vision, um, for, for Stevens Creek, but it will look at, at transit options in the corridor. It looks at the rights of way and, um, and other factors like land use, et cetera. Um, if, if Sean's on, he may be able to speak to it.
Yeah, yeah, I can add to that. I mean, the, 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 the VTA funding portion of it is, um, specific to transit improvements, you know, broadly, um, with that sort of caveat that, that there is going to be obviously a lot of focus on transit modes, but we, we really want to be as open as possible to really start with needs and start with where you want to go, not, you know, what mode it is, you know, how much it's going to cost, all that kind of stuff in the beginning. You know, you're really backing into what fits your vision. Um, and as Chris said, that would be pretty much mode-neutral and, and frankly, involving all modes. Um, you know, it's not like a one, um, likely to be one magical solution. It, it's, it's obviously, um, probably a lot more complex with a lot of different strategies, and frankly, different strategies in different cities. Um, you know, part of it would be sort of that more uniform corridor, whole Stevens Creek, um, but actually, most of it is probably going to be much more refined, um, at the city or, or, uh, you know, community or individual intersection level that, um, you know, mobility happens at many scales, and we want to be respectful of that. Um, and then one other portion is about a third of the budget is strictly devoted to outreach. So there's a lot of effort given to, um, especially early on, to allow the community to come in and convey their experience and their values and really shape that. Um, and we're going to spend a lot of time recording that and, um, you know, filtering it back to each of the cities so that they understand where, where each of the communities line in their priorities, sort of a phase one that ends with, with that vision development, uh, before we really get into the details of, of those modal-specific things in the phase two.
Okay, so you're looking at a nineteen-month, um, delivery for essentially a report, is that right?
Yeah, the, the end, um, uh, th- there's a couple of deliverables here. We have a part one that's, um, pretty much eight months in, and that's the vision statement. That's, that's sort of a hard stop with that vision statement that's talking about needs and talking about, um, conditions and, uh, a lot of stakeholder feedback. And then a part two is more getting into, um, the details of potential solutions, and , uh, it does include, uh, development, preferred alternative or alternatives, and a conceptual, um, uh, well, not really conceptual, but an implementation plan, uh, so that, those are sort of the, that endpoint final deliverable.
Okay, okay. Uh, let me go to Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Wei.
So, um, yeah, quick, uh, question to start off. So it sounds like, uh, when we chose not to participate in November of twenty twenty, no, uh, study proceeded at that time?
That's correct.
Okay. And from my recollection back then, um, you, I think there was, uh, concern, um, that the, uh, the plan for Stevens Creek was going to be heavily influenced by San Jose. And I, I think that's what I remember being our concern. Cupertino is not San Jose. Yes, we, we share the same long path, um, down Stevens Creek, but it's a very different, uh, section of Stevens Creek. If you were to ask Gaddis... If you were to ask Gattis and down the center of Los Gattis, it's very different than Cupertino. They are different and they need to be addressed that way. And was, is that that wasn't the way the was going to work out. It was going to say point A, point B, and that, that would be about the extent. But. The fact that we didn't join in back then, the fact that it didn't proceed forward back then. Hopefully that brings forth the understanding that each of the participants. Even if we are so much smaller than San Jose, each of the participants have to be given a fair shake. In terms of what will and won't work in their respective sections. I do believe, you know, Deirdre to Deansa College is really a very wise thing to do. Those are two very important destinations that people all along that route can get on and go to either of those. Or go from one to the other. And so while that is important, then it should be studied. And I do, we should be trying to participate. You know, we don't want to be left out and not having our concerns and things put out. As long as it truly is not just lip service that's being given. And that the predetermined best mode for San Jose, you know, is going to be the, the, the main focus. And so I do like that I'm hearing that that's not going to be the approach. It's going to be looking at innovative ideas and possibly a combination along that, long stretch. So with all that being said, sorry to be so wordy, with all that being said. I think at this point in time, I think we should join. And so at least for the current request of 154,000 that we participate. Hopefully we will be listened to and, you know, our ideas and concerns. And with that being the case, we would continue to be a participant. But if it turned out that it's got a different focus, then at that point, we would probably return to our previous one. And say that we're going to just focus on Cupertino. So I think for tonight, I think we should be a participant and move forward and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And let, let me just translate that into a brief question, which will hopefully have a brief answer. So, so Sean, what comfort and assurance can you give Cupertino that the sentiments coming out of here? You know, even if they range a gamut and spectrum that will be reflected in your ultimate deliverables?
Yeah, I mean, in, in terms of how we're scoped, I mean, the idea is really that, really the one thing that is shared across the corridor is, is the transit service. Just about everything else related to the street itself is within each city and is going to be essentially. You know, guided by those, those cities jurisdictions, you know, it's, it's not, it's really a bottom up type thing. It's a very long nine mile corridor. There are very few people walking, biking or even driving its full length. You know, it's really the transit service that's the continuous portion. So all of those other modes and how they're addressed are really going to be done at that smaller city or probably, you know, a large block level. And so I don't think we're even, you know, looking at the perspective of the cities versus each other. And I don't think that we've built in that there has to be great consensus on, say, how Stevens Creek has to look and operate in Cupertino versus San Jose. You know, each city would sort of determine how the street would, you know, their vision for the street and their community. With the exception, of course, of that, you know, the transit service being the thing that's connecting this, this string of, of cities. So I mean, we definitely want to respect each jurisdiction's. Character and, and, and make sure it's integrated in the process.
All right, Vice Mayor Chow?
So I wonder why it does the study stop at Deansa? The, the, the other side of Deansa is Cupertino too? And why are they not a part of the study? I think we, we, because the, beyond Deansa, we people have more challenges accessing transit. So why could, can we include them in the study?
Uh, Councilmember.
And also then my question is, where does the San Jose portion start? Because if we stop at Deansa, it feels like this is a plan for San Jose to people, students to reach Deansa. It's not really a plan to serve Cupertino residents. Yeah, so.
Initially, the study was going to start at Deansa. And then we asked for the starting point to move a little bit further west. So that it could get right to the over crossing Stevens Creek at 85. In the event that there's a transit service on 85 at some point in the future. So we have a seamless connection and then connecting all the way to Deirdre Don. And, and that was defined kind of through discussions with committees over time, over the last several years.
It feels like it should reach Foothill. Foothill is, we have a lot of people living there also. They would need access to Deirdre Don Station or other transit areas. So. The Cupertino portion should start at Foothill or maybe.
I think that the, what we were, what the idea was that we were trying to define the most urbanized part of the corridor. And that areas are areas outside of the corridor. We would be looking at other first last mile solutions to get people to the corridor. So things like VIA and other services, that was the idea.
There are bus routes currently going through Stevens Creek to Foothill. Right? So there are transit right now going through that.
We can, we can certainly inquire about it and, and see what the, if, if there would be any increased costs to adding, adding that.
So. Again, sorry. Another question was the, where does the San Jose portion start?
So San Jose's portion starts right across from Santa Clara, right by the Valley Fair Mall and Santana Row. That, that's segment of Stevens Creek is shared by Santa Clara and San Jose.
Okay, and I see that the cost is calculated by the million, million miles. Of the road. So if extend to Foothill, that would depend on how long is Foothill to Deansa?
I, I was just going to add, generally in corridor studies, we do a half mile sort of buffer when we're doing the study. I believe that half mile is pretty close to getting to Foothill and we can certainly extend that. So there, we're grabbing that in, in, in terms of how we do our analysis. The, it's about a mile. The, so we could, I'm, I'm sure we could probably do that. I, I think it also aligns with the VTA's Route 23. So that's really intended to be, you know, that's the high quality transit service in the corridor. And it's, it, you know, a lot of it is meant to leverage that asset. So I think that the, the boundaries of the study really have to do with, you know, how that service is operated. And as we're saying with that last mile issue, we do want to have a much, you know, a, a buffer around there. It's generally a half mile, but I think it's one of those things where, where if it's reasonable, if it's a mile, you know, going to Foothill, that makes sense. I don't, I don't think that really changes, you know, the scoping. It just is, you know, making sure that that's included.
It'll be great if we can make sure that Foothill is included. I mean, not Foothill, Stevens Creek to Foot, up to Foot, Foothill is included in the study. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I think a couple of my questions has been answered. Because I am like Vice Mayor Chow, I am curious why is it doesn't go to Foothill? Because at Foothill, there is our Sunnyview, Sunnyview Senior Centers do, do a lot of ridership there. So it would be really great if the, you know, we can end at Foothill instead of Deansa. So my other question is, we kept on saying it's Deirdre Don Station to Deansa. Actually, it's not because Valley Fair is not Deirdre Don Station. There's another segment that doesn't really go to Deirdre Don Station. Is, is it, am I interpreting incorrectly?
Are you, are you referring to San Jose's portion?
Right. The San Jose portion you said started at Valley Fair.
I'm sorry, I meant it, I meant at Deirdre Don Station.
Oh, so it, it is Deirdre Don Station.
It starts at Deirdre Don Station, correct.
Okay, because Deirdre Don Station goes to San Carlos, then Stevens Creek Boulevard. So it goes all the way through San Carlos Boulevard to Deirdre Don Station.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, so, yeah, that was curious because it said, so it would be really, really good if you can, from Deirdre Don Station all the way to Foothill Expressway. So if that could be, you know, verified, Sean, that would be great. My second comment is, I agree with Councilmember Willie. We need to be part of the study because we need to get our opinions in there, our visions in there. So if we're not in there, then we would be excluded in providing our input. And as Mayor Darcy verified, that it is not a commitment, but is a vision study. So I do agree with Councilmember Willie that I think Cupertino needs to be part of the vision study. Because we're not an island in, in, in Silicon Valley. We need to work with, when a transit is considered, we need to work with our neighboring cities. Because the street is connected, connects to our residents, to other, not cities, but to job opportunities, to shopping areas. So I do agree with Councilmember Willie that I think Cupertino definitely needs to be part of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Yeah, I, I mean, I would just comment that I, I encourage, you know, the consultants to look long. I mean, I, I, I think it was a, it was a fair response to the question of how Cupertino's, you know, sentiments are going to be reflected. But, you know, frankly, it wasn't, it wasn't really that reflective, right? Our, our sentiments to say that, you know, well, this one component transit, you know, is going to be common. But the other ones, you know, things like, you know, bike paths and, you know, pedestrian walkways. Well, i- i- it's not an insignificant component, right? The, the transit part of the equation. So, I mean, I, I, I would say, you know, Cupertino is getting it right. I, I, I really think if we're talking about a real transit solution for a good amount of time into the future, we're talking about grade separation. We're, we're, we're talking about looking to the future and trying to define something that will help, you know, economy proof us in terms of. Getting people from point A to B effectively, which after all, at the end of the day is what a transit system is about. So, you know, I, I, I think we can certainly look at issues, you know, like equity. But I think we also need to think about issues beyond going from 10 miles an hour to 11 miles an hour. I think we really need to be, you know, going after what, what makes sense. I- i- in terms of putting forth, you know, significant amounts of, of dollars in, in, in effort over the course of, you know, a, a number of years. So, you know, I, I, I hope that, that kind of effort is really reflected and put forth. I'll certainly be following this, you know, beyond my time as a elected official here. Because I, I think it's just, it's, it's really quite important to the future of, of our economy and our area. And ultimately, if you make good transit, the equities of it are such that everyone benefits. Okay, well, can we have a motion to go ahead and pass the recommended action to join onto the study? As a, as the default motion, if we wanted to proceed further, Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to participate in the study for the recommended action.
Okay, so Councilmember Willie, just correct me if I'm wrong. You're moving that we approve participation in the Stevens Creek Boulevard corridor transit study to create a cohesive vision for the Stevens Creek Boulevard corridor. Including a study of the potential for transit. Councilmember Wei, did you want to second Councilmember Willie's motion?
I would like to second that with a amendment to add to, so the study in Cupertino extends to. Expressway.
Little expressway, okay. Councilmember Willie, do you, do you accept that?
Thank you.
By Boulevard or Expressway?
Foothill. Boulevard, not Expressway, yeah. But today, yeah.
Okay, great. So Councilmember Moore?
Okay, well, considering some of the, the suggested. Modes of transportation that were presented by San Jose when they did their RFI. Many of them were very forward thinking. Bombardier, Monorail, BYD, Monorail and Sky Shuttle. They mentioned Boring Company having electric vehicles in a tunnel. You know, conceptual podcars, things that had not yet been put into operation. Considering those types of grade separation that, that they had considered. I, I, you're, you're welcome to include in, in your motion, going to Foothill Boulevard. But I think the realities of the amount of density at the west side of, of the city. Compared to the cost of these kinds of grade separated transit options. You, you might just end up with bus rapid transit extending the whole way. And not something particularly innovative. So just, just keep that in mind. And during the December 13th meeting that we had. I did bring up that Cupertino loves Stevens Creek Boulevard, loves the trees. We love the median, the planted median. And we, I've already been spending, I want to say millions of dollars. On our separated bicycle lanes, protected bicycle lanes in, in the city. And in fact, in the presentation which I saw, they had a photograph of, it looked like it was the bike lane around Main Street Cupertino. So we are, already have this being put in place. We're working on it. We're, we're making a beautiful walkable street scape. However, when you get into, and we don't have on-street parking. When you get into San Jose, you pass the 280 and Lawrence Expressway. What you see there is a median turn lane and you have on-street parking. So they have a lot of space and they have a lot of room for improvements and even space for a, a bus lane, a, a, a rapid transit lane. Whereas we are already much more constrained. So I did bring this up, that it may be that the best we can do in the short term is provide prioritized signal timing at our intersections. And that, as expensive as it is, what I'm hearing is that people would actually prefer in Cupertino. That this would go underground if we were going to have a grade separated transit. And that would, that would cost a lot of money. So I did convey all this. It has been shared. Just, just be warned that if we're going all the way to Foothill, we might not get the, the fancy bells and whistles. Because it's going to get all that much more expensive and we might just have the bus. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. You know, I, I think those are very pragmatic comments, you know, and you make a good point. I, you, you know, a, at the end of it, you know, hopefully it can all be taken in the spirit of openness that, that these comments are proffered. You know, I, I see this motion as a show of good faith from Cupertino and hopefully that will be reciprocated, you know, given the concerns. I'll also point out that, you know, the Bart extension is spending somewhere on the order of several billions of dollars. To go underground into downtown San Jose, you know, and, and as a matter of timing, it might not be a bad idea to see where the wherewithal goes from there. You know, it, it would be really nice to have a, a, a good built out transit system in Santa Clara County. And if we're anticipating a lot of activity along those lines going underground. Just practically speaking, you know, certainly the, the dollars are there, you know, coming up in the next 10 or 15 or even 20 years. Why not, you know, think about that as the natural extension of what we're looking at here as, as a possibility? I'm not sure I quite, you know, agree with the constriction. I'm not sure I quite, you know, agree with the um constriction uh or at least as I'm perceiving it, of of a rubric where a particular preferred mode is defined and kind of pursued as, you know, um the focal point of a deliverable. I I I think it might make more sense to keep more of an open mind, a- and again, you know. Um, it's not even a matter of shooting for the stars. I I I think I think it's a matter of, you know, doing what's proper for infrastructure. You know, don't think about, you know, don't think about the immediate pressures from you know, dollars that might be influenced by um things that are a little bit more uh profit-driven. Think about the infrastructure and the policy from a jurisdictional perspective, what makes sense, if you wanna make sure that this area is successful. Um, if that infrastructure is built, you know, for the for for now and, you know, for the very foreseeable and long future. So so that's what I would encourage and and reiterate. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised?
Um, so I I see that in our two thousand nineteen resolution. Um, we, I think we support uh the the transit corridor along Stevens Creek and I two eighty corridor, and I two eighty corridor is also mentioned in the scope of work. So I would envision continuing to Foothill does not necessarily mean going through Stevens Creek. It could be a lo- a long two eighty corridor to Foothill Boulevard. And that transit corridor, right? So that was in our two thousand nineteen resolution. So are we asserting this resolution today or?
So.
Okay, we include that um in our approval today.
I I two eighty was looked at at in a in a proposed previous scope of work in addition to the Stevens Creek Corridor, and the costs were were considerably high. Um, and so at the, at this point, Stevens Creek uh Boulevard is is the corridor um in of the study. Um, not not I two eighty.
Oh, so they don't consider I two eighty?
No.
So then, uh, part of the resolution is also not use general-purpose travel lanes or adversely impact vehicle vehicular capacity on city surface streets. That's our two thousand nineteen resolution and so this uh study would likely not comply with that resolution?
With that particular element, the part about I two eighty. Um, because of subsequent discussions that happened afterwards. Um, and the costs involved with studying both, we there was a, we looked at with the previous scope of work. Um, studying just I two eighty in Cupertino only. Um, and studying Stevens Creek Corridor in other cities, but the cost to Cupertino would have been extremely high.
But the scope of work right now does include I two eighty corridor study, what does that mean?
I I believe the intent there is to, you know, s- more from the vehicular um perspective of not interfering with the ramps. Um, particularly because there is concern, um, uh, you know, short of a a grade separation, if you're doing other types of um of uh treatments, there could be interaction with the ramps and the ramp intersections particularly. That could be problematic. Um, there are, there tend to be a lot of issues around Caltrans um signals and then coordinating those with the city's um systems, which which does get worked out, but um, you know. It 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 can change when you when you start having different types of improvements. So so the, you know, there's an eye towards that. Um, there's several, obviously, freeway and highway inter- interchanges within the corridor, that that could be an issue. Um, we're also gonna take a look at sort of broader travel patterns, understanding that so um, when you're looking at vehicles, um, I I would conjecture that there are not a lot of people that drive the full length of Stevens Creek. They may be dipping down to two eighty and rejoining Stevens Creek and all sorts of uh things like that. So as part of the broader travel patterns, that would be studied.
Okay, so I would like to point out that in other countries, i- it seems here people are thinking, oh, we need the density in order to have transit, but that's not the case in other countries. I lived in Germany where it's suburban of Munich. Our area is all single-family home. We have uh street strasenbaum, I mean, light rail going through that area, so, and then in Taipei also, that there are, I mean, it because you do need that network in order to support a transit system. It's not like if you only connect the core, that really doesn't support the entire city, and that kind of transit doesn't work. You need to reach um, provide a grid of transit, yeah. So that's why I think it's important to include a Foothill Boulevard. Because those population will per- and then they they will make this a a better transit system.
Um, you know, Sean, before I go to uh Councilmember Moore, so so practically speaking, you know, as we sit here, a year and a half out from now, what is your, what is your guess at the most likely outcome? Because, you know, there there has been identified, you know, a particular mode. I mean, wha- wha- what's your guess at it?
Um, I I guess uh I would think it would be something in the form that um there'd be a vision, like a very long-term vision. And there would be steps to get there and also interim um investments that help mobility now. Um, at probably a a pretty small level and at at larger levels. Um, like um, like signal priority, that type of thing, where um, many communities are doing those types of upgrades that are fairly cost-effective. So if your your goal is ultimately to have grade separation, it is worthwhile still doing transit priority investments um now. Because we know that um, you know, a grade-separated um uh facility would take several, several years. It's totally worth investing in the system as it is now. Um, we would also probably see um a formalization of uh programs of like transit access and um maybe in parking um as well. Santa Clara is very interested in parking, not only along Stevens Creek, but um, looking at the streets that are connecting to it, so they had us add in um parking inventories along there. Um, so that that probably be a component, probably not as big a deal in Cupertino, because as you said, there is no on-street parking um on Stevens Creek. There are adjacent roadways which could be looked at as well.
Okay, you know, and and now now when you say several, several years, uh you know, I'll note that the plan to kind of interconnect BART throughout the entirety of the Bay Area, I think it's what, forty or fifty years now? I mean, we couldn't be looking at at decades, really, right? I mean, in terms of
Right, yeah, I mean, tha- that is the drawback. I I will say, one of the the things that's holding back the acceleration of building uh more transit in in the United States, frankly, is that we don't, you know, already do enough of it. It's not sort of a constant building and and hopefully, um, as you were saying, there's sort of like um, uh, there will be enough resources available that um, uh, you know, around the Bay Area, they're continually building out. Transit, that's how you sort of begin to get costs to come down, because you have a professional group and um the equipment to just keep going. So you see cities reach a critical mass usually when they're building out rail systems. Where they're just, they seem like they're continually building, well, that's because it sort of becomes much cheaper on a unit cost basis as you go out. We're still talking about big sums of money, of course. Um, but I, yeah, I mean, I I would, my my biggest guess is that we would have different um types of improvements in different timeframes, because you don't just wanna pause everything and, like you said, sort of hit that home run very long-term. You definitely wanna have benefits for people um as soon as possible, um, uh, that we know are cost-effective. Um, and so I I would hope that we would have sort of staged implementation getting towards that broader vision, because it's really about mobility and the needs of people today, and then, of course, as we're forecasting the future with um development coming in.
Okay, well, i- i- it seems like you'll call out the specifics, you know, as um, as we're working along, so um, let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Uh, thank you. I I do have a question probably for the city attorney. Uh, would you happen to know if there's a transit center uh part of the the Valco SB thirty-five plan? Cause to my recollection, we don't have one. And so I'm just kind of thinking in terms of the future, where would we even have a transit center like like you see at uh I believe it's the Milpita Station, uh maybe Berriessa, parking garages, plenty of places for uh people to uh park and ride. Um, but would you happen to recall if there is one there?
So it's 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 not part of the approved project. Um, I think, um you know, I I believe there'd be some interest i- in in accommodating that um at at the location. Um, but but at this point, it's not part of the approved pro- uh project, so, you know, it'd be be the subject of further discussion.
Okay, okay, thank you. And so that's something for the consultants to to consider. Um, also, there is a pre-COVID tremendous amount of north-south traffic on Lawrence Expressway. Uh, Danza, Saratoga-Sunnyvale, and then um Saratoga um as well. And uh, you know, please uh take that into consideration when you're looking at um future options for what will have the flexibility to connect with the north-south routes, because I actually personally think that the Lawrence Expressway north-south route, as soon as, as soon as um City Place uh gets underway in in Santa Clara, um, we're going to really be suffering on that um particular expressway, and it's it's going to need, um, I think, even more consideration than uh Stevens Creek Boulevard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Okay, um, are there any further, uh I see Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised?
Um, I would would like to clarify the motion or maybe make consider a friendly amendment. So this is first, uh, this part is in the staff uh report. And I I'm thinking this could be added, preferably not using general purpose uh travel lanes or adversely impact vehicular capacity on city surface street and extending the study to Foothill Boulevard. So could I propose this maybe as a friendly amendment?
Um, yeah, before you do that, Councilmember uh Vice Mayor Chow, let's go ahead and um let let's check in with uh our our city staffer and um the consultants. So can we do that and be consistent with what the recommendation is? Um, because Vice Mayor Chow is correct. I mean, that that is, you know, taken directly from the uh resolution that was passed by Cupertino back in twenty nineteen. And um, you know, if we're talking about signal priority, I think we could probably easily do a carve-out. I mean, if you're talking about other modes of transit that would implicate, you know, that language that was, you know, specifically identified in the Cupertino twenty nineteen resolution, I think we're talking about a different situation, so. Um, would you be able to work with that language if the 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 motion was amended uh to um, you know, to to reflect consistency with our two twenty nineteen resolution in that regard? It it I'll note that it doesn't have the, you know, Highway two eighty portion of it in there.
I think um that we could include any any language like that into the motion. Although I think that honestly, really, it's 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 my 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 job and and also um the the role of of the appointed council member to the committee overseeing this, to to ensure that that resolution is being met in Cupertino. We were really hoping not to have too many um, too many things that would potentially inhibit creative and innovation, uh crea- creativeness and innovation. Um, by saying, okay, uh, we'll study this, but not X, Y, Z and all these things, but but of course, we can include it. Um, and and my role would be to with the staff working group that would help o- oversee the the um, the project, implementation of the project, to make sure that we aren't um taking lanes in Cupertino and doing all these things the community doesn't want, and the council doesn't want.
Okay, great. Well, I I guess the flip side of it, it could foster more creativity, right, to kind of put that, you know, uh uh as opposed to making it easier to, you know, go go with a default.
Sure.
Um, okay, well, let me go to the uh motion maker. Um, and I believe that was Councilmember Willie with the second from Councilmember Way. Or do I have that reversed?
Reverse.
It was reversed, okay.
But Willie moved with the second. Is that what you said?
That's what I said, yeah. Okay, um, so Councilmember Willie, will you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yeah, I'll accept it. I I do somewhat agree with Chris's concern that um it it, you know, there there are things that could go down Stevens Creek uh being creative possibly and um, but I I'd say let's let's go ahead and give it a try. See how it goes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember uh Willie. And Councilmember Way, do you accept that as the second of the motion?
I I really don't, because I don't, this is a vision study, and that's going to be visualized next decade. Or even two decades of possibilities, and to put this kind of a restrictions on it, I think it would only inhibit the vision, the visioning part of it, and but we could have that guideline for our staff or our council members going into representing us into the study. I I just don't think we should have such specific um restrictions on it, so that the the visioning or the innovative things can can be restricted, that that is my opinion. And I, you know, Councilmember Willie, you you voiced your concerns, and I do believe that if our staff and our representative, council representative, have this in their mind and then but i- i- I I really don't think we should put that in the, but yes, the extend to Foothill Boulevard, yes, but I I I those specific restrictions, it's really not. I I don't think it's overworked.
Put the language in there to make it consistent with the twenty nineteen resolution, is that?
Well, twenty nineteen, this is twenty twenty-two, and I think this is a different study. And I I do think that we need to let the group have its visioning. This is a vision. This is not, if we don't like what it happens, we don't have to agree with with it. I I just don't think we should go in with restrictions like this.
Okay, okay. Yeah, um, all right, so the motion is not changed. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, uh, do you have anything further at this time?
Um, I'd like to clarify, I, this is not a restriction. It just says preferably not using. And then I assume the study will consider multiple options. And like uh Mayor said, usually when there is some restriction, that's when it will promote more innovation. For example, it could be a pot pot and air, right, which some other city, I think, have studied. So this is not a restriction, it's just stating here is what we prefer. And so we hope one of the option would not use the street. But maybe there are o- other options, but we hope this option would at least be one option that's considered, right? So that's why this is not really a restriction. So can I then make a replacement motion?
Yeah, you can make a substitute motion. Let 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 you know, um, let let me just ask that, you know, put that back up if you don't mind.
Okay.
I just, I want you to clean up the language on it. Um, so if you can, yeah, share your screen again, so we can um, can you change the or in your additional language to a nor?
So.
Just put nor, nor, yeah, N O R.
And where?
There's an or in there.
Oh, there.
Okay, and make the im- impacting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, if you make that as your substitute motion, I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay.
Okay, so do you do you move that as your substitute motion?
Yeah. I'll leave this as a substitute motion.
Okay, um, so Vice Mayor Chow um moves the substitute motion, and I'm seconding Vice Mayor Chow's substitute motion. Um, okay, Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised, but I'm assuming that you're not looking to deliberate further on this. You have the substitute motion on the table now. Um, I I will point out that, yes, you know, looking at the language of your substitute motion again, it is not binding, and I will reiterate that as a seconder. Um, you know, if um, that that so-called creative and innovative spirit Um, you know, if, um, that, that so-called creative and innovative spirit, um, you know, requires it, go ahead and, you know, put that, um, you know, mode or modes that you're looking at, um, you know, to, um, to Sean and your colleagues, uh, in, in your, in your deliverables. Um, but I, I think it's a good reiteration of Cupertino's position. So I, I'm not seconding it as a, as a binding of your, your work potentially, but, um, as a, um, affirmation of what, what Cupertino's position is here. Um, okay, so let's go ahead and if there are no further comments from council, go ahead and conduct a roll call vote on the motion, on the substitute motion, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Substitute motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Um, we're at eleven twenty-three right now. We are not going to have time to, uh, give sufficient due to our work plan update. And so my, um, my suggestion is that we, uh, continue this meeting, I would suggest this Thursday evening. If this Thursday evening doesn't work, um, then we can try next Tuesday, which is the twenty-second. Um, can you take a, a brief, um, look at your calendars at this time, uh, to see if that works? Uh, first of all, uh, Thursday, the seventeenth, I would suggest, uh, that we start at six o'clock. And my expectation would be that, uh, we should be able to, um, you know, complete this item within an hour or an hour and a half. Um, Councilmember Way?
Um, if we, uh, expect to finish it an hour and a half, can we start at seven o'clock? I have a, I would like to listening to the mental health, um, uh, webinar that's hosted by Senator Dave Cortes, if possible.
I have no objection to that, uh, to start at seven o'clock on, uh, Thursday, the seventeenth. Um, any other comments on, uh, this from my fellow council members? Okay, uh, well, hearing no objections, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, continue, uh, this meeting until the evening of, uh, February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, at a time certain of seven o'clock PM. And so Madam City Clerk, if you could, um, please conduct that notice uh, so that we can reconvene our, uh, regularly scheduled meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, until that date and time. Um, without any further, um, you know, delay, we'll go ahead and complete the rest of the, um, agenda at that time as well, the non-enumerated items. So, um, thank you very much. Uh, we had some really great discussions tonight. I thought we had a, a, a nice breadth of, um, topics as well. And so we will see you in a couple of evenings on, uh, the evening of Thursday, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you very much and the meeting is adjourned to that date and time. Take care. Have a great night.